Time to call the Town Board of Selectmen meeting to order. It is 6:43 PM. Today is January 26, 2021, and this is a remote meeting, therefore, all votes will be done via roll call. Read over the agenda to begin. First, we will approve the minutes of our regular meeting from January 12, 2021. And then we'll get into community relations announcement, an open forum, appointments and resignations, scheduled appointments. We do have a couple this evening. One is at 7:00 PM. It's a cable television renewal license public hearing. At 7:30, we have the fire station building committee coming in. The next is new business followed by old business under old business number one, community feedback tool, followed by human resources assistant. Then we move down to committee report, CMR PC, Economic Development Commission, Fire Station Building Committee, LNG Committee, Marijuana Advisory Committee, Sex Offended By Law Committee, and Stipend Advisory Committee. The next is the Board of Selectment Policy Review Vehicle Use Policy, followed by our goals and objectives, student select person report. Hi, Henry. And the town administrator report by Andrew and other business unknown at time of posting. Our next meeting announcement, and of course, our next regular meeting is February 9, 2021, at 6:30. All right, so we'll move on up, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting that was held on January 12, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. David? Bill? Steve? My vote, I. It passes. Thank you. Next, we'll go to community relations announcements and open forum. We only have a few tonight. So the first one is about our dog licenses. 2021 dog licenses are now available through the town clerk. Check www.townofcharlton.net for details to pay online, drop payment in Dropbox, or mail payment. Call the town clerk's office for any questions at 508-248-2249. Next, we have nomination papers are now available for the May 1, 2021 town election. Details and the list of open seats are now on the town website. Town's clerk's page, basically. Please call for questions and process during COVID town hall closure. Tax bills, excuse me, are due on Monday, February 1, 2021. Payments can be left in the secure Dropbox located on the building to the right of the handicap door. If you need a receipt, please enclose a self-addressed stamped envelope. If you did not receive the bill, please contact the collectors office at 508-248-2239. And I did want to read another announcement, and I don't have the details in front of me, but Andrew, maybe you can help me fill in. Just that the Board of Health had sent some information along. I think it's posted on our town website.
Yes, we're doing, basically, yeah. At this point, you know, we're seeing the ramp up from the state's vaccination efforts. And even though they're running into a limit on, you know, supply availability, they're trying to kind of ramp up their availability of, I guess, the vaccination bandwidth. So we're trying to do everything that we can to make sure that when it becomes available for the populations in Charlton, that we have the resources needed. So we're looking for as many qualified volunteers as available to help step up as vaccinators. And, you know, anybody who is interested, qualified, to contact the Board of Health, and we'll be working with Harrington Hospital to try to get the vaccinations coordinated. Additionally, the Board of Health also has a link available right on the town's main page, and it's been shared a couple of times on social media, that if you put your personal info, you know, put your information into it, that has some of the triggering qualifications relative to the vaccination and the phases. You'll get an email from the Board of Health when you are eligible to receive your vaccine with signup instructions. And we'll be working together too to try to come up with some other means and methods for ensuring that, you know, the elderly population and those that don't have direct access to computers are also able to sign up for vaccines as they become available.
All right, thank you, Andrew. I appreciate that. Now we'll ask if anyone from the general public would like to make a statement. Now would be the time. All you need to do is raise your hand or send us a note, and we'll make sure you get on. And if you do, please announce your name and where you live, and please try to keep it to about two to three minutes. Andrew, are you seeing anyone yet? Give them a second.
I am not. Seeing no comment.
So no comments? Okay. All right, so we will move on to appointments and resignations. We don't have anything listed under there, so we'll go right through there. And actually, we're, look at that. Maybe late, but we're early. So it's, we're going to skip down because our first appointment, and we have to adhere to the rules. So we have to start that at 7:00. And we have to wait. So we're going to skip down to... Actually, can we, do we have enough time, Andrew? No, because they're not here yet, probably, right? So we go 7:30. We'll go to old business, community feedback tool. Sound good? Andrew?
So as previously discussed, one of the goals, one of the goals of the board was to establish a tool to solicit community feedback on the services we provide and find ways to identify areas for improvement and better recognize positive and professional service delivery. After collaborating with Ms. Woodlock, Ms. Speewell, we have drafted the attached online form to solicit community feedback. I hope to work with department heads on implementing this tool into our operational procedures, but I appreciate any feedback that the board would like to provide.
Any comments from any of the board members? Or Henry, anyone?
Yes, that's really small text.
I had to look at it on the thing and...
I know. To get it down to one page. But maybe it was a little too small.
That's okay.
No, I think it looks really nice.
Is the feedback tool just going to be used by like the department heads to kind of see how the experiences went?
Well, I hope they'll work with IT to kind of integrate it in with exterior emails. So that way, if there's an email chain back and forth, it might be an easy link right on the, on the signature line that might redirect to somebody who can follow up directly with the interaction. We're also going to look too with the implementation of our new permitting system. If either this tool or something similar can be implemented with PermaTrak.
Any other questions?
Good question.
Yeah, Steve?
No, no, Henry, that was a very good question.
Oh, excellent. All right, Andrew, I must, you would like us to vote on this?
Yeah, if you could just give approval.
Sure. I'll entertain a motion if someone would make one. Hey, Bill, you muted.
So moved.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do the roll call vote. David? Bill?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
All right, thank you. I want to thank Andrew and Paxey for working on this and everyone else who's contributed by sending comments. It's much appreciated. And it's one more little check off of the goals too, I think. So it's a good thing. Thank you.
Karen, do you want to do the vehicle use policy? That's pretty innocuous.
I like the way you think, Bill. Yep, we can zip on down there. And for those trying to follow along, that would be under Board of Selectment Policy Review, the only item under there. So vehicle use policy. Andrew?
That is an updated vehicle use policy for the board's consideration. The previous vehicle use policy was approved on November 9, 1989, is outdated. The new version of the vehicle use policy outlines the specific uses of vehicles, vehicles stipends, and other helpful information for employees. I recommend the board approve the vehicle use policy as updated.
Yeah, I didn't have any questions on it. So barring, barring any of my colleagues, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Right, hearing none. We'll do this again via roll call. Bill?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
All right, I vote I. Passes Andrew once again. Thank you. Much appreciated. Still, how about, should we go, should we go down to the student slot person reporting? Okay, Henry.
Yeah, if you want me, it might get close to 7:00. I can try to fit it in. It's not too long today. It's up to you guys, though.
Yeah, we have almost, what, 10?
Yeah, five.
Five minutes. You can do it, Henry.
All right, I'll be quick. All right, I'm going to share my screen. All right, and... There we go. Okay, so here's my report. So building off of what I talked about last time with the four different learning models. Two Wednesdays ago, the school committee held a meeting to vote on one of the models to fit the new guidelines for mandated live instruction. And Superintendent LaMarche presented them all the way back on January 6. So the school committee decided to go with Model A from now, from this Monday until March 15. Model C from March 15 into a full normal school day on May the 3rd. So currently, we're in Model A, which is just a kind of an extension from where we are right now. So students will be in school for a half day, two days each week in the morning, and then every student will be in online classes in the afternoon. And Wednesday is no longer an independent learning day. It's just going to be a regular day with online classes in the morning. And with this plan, there will still be six feet of social distancing in place. And along with deciding on the model, this committee also added professional development days between the transition to each model, so teachers can prepare for the nuances of each model. And during the meeting, there's a lot of community feedback during open forum, and some vexed about safety while others wanted their students back in school. And at the start of the meeting, Mrs. Reed also announced she would not be running for reelection, and she's from Charlton. And just some miscellaneous items, sports have started again. Basketball, girls' basketball, had their first game last week, and that's the only winter sport occurring right now. There's some offseason practices such as track, and the weight room is also open, but nothing formal outside of basketball. And the music department also returned to their practices after their break. They don't have any competitions or anything coming up, but it's good that they're back in practice. And a new social justice club at Shepherd Hill, A Better Hill, formed and is starting to become involved in school affairs. They met today for the first time, and their agenda, they're looking to reform the student handbook curriculum and push for better recognition of diversity within the school community. And lastly, at the school committee meeting where they voted on the model, Michaela Clute was awarded the Leadership Award by Principal Chaplin. And Michaela is very involved in the community. She's from Charlton. And at the same meeting, I and my fellow student Serena Veyou received the Academic Excellence Awards from Superintendent LaMarche.
Congratulations, one and all. Thank you so much. Any questions for Henry from the board? All right, thanks again, Andrew. Andrew, I'm looking at Andrew. Henry, well done, as usual. All right, and I do believe you have 7:00 o'clock. I have 7:00 o'clock, Andrew. Yep. So we're moving up back up to under scheduled appointments, which number 5, 7:00 PM, cable television renewal license public hearing. Andrew?
Attaches the public hearing notice and draft contract for the cable television renewal license agreement between the Town of Charlton and Spectrum Northeast LLC. The previous contract expired on June 28, 2019. Bill August from EPC in August and the Cable Committee have been working to negotiate the attached contract for the town, and we recommend the board approve it as written. Members from each will be present to answer any questions the board or residents may have. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the attached opening statement.
And that is what she shall do right now. So we have a legal notice, Town of Charlton, to cable television license renewal public hearing. The Town of Charlton by the Board of Selectmen as the statutory cable license issuing authority will hold a cable license renewal public hearing on January 26, 2021, at 7:00 PM pertaining to Spectrum Northeast LLC, also known as Charter Communications in connection with the possible issuance of a cable television renewal license to Spectrum. Please note, due to COVID-19 state of emergency, this public hearing will be held via Zoom and can be attended by desktop, laptop, tablet, or phone via the following link or numbers, which they list, task code numbers, et cetera. In this, in, if the state of emergency is terminated, or if the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law is rescinded, this public hearing will be held in the Board of Selectmen's meeting room at the Charlton Town Hall, 37 Main Street, Charl, Mass. At the date and time specified above, please call the Office of the Board of Selectmen at 508-248-2206 for more information. This proceeding is held pursuant to federal law 47 USC 546 to ascertain Charlton cable-ready needs as part of the license renewal process and possible final action. To approve the license may be considered and taken by the issuing authority. Public comment on local cable needs and past performance of Spectrum, aka Charter, is invited and shall be allowed by electronic video and audio conference platforms in accordance with the above. Copies of town license renewal documents may be made available for public inspection at the Office of the Town Clerk or by contacting Town Administrator Andrew Goulas, CEO of Town Hall by order of the Board of Selectmen as statutory license issuing authority. Motion to open hearing. Well, it's open now, so we have to see who's here to speak. Yes, Andrew?
I have Bill August and Eric Borgensen from the Cable Committee. Bill August is the general counsel.
All right, welcome, Bill.
Thank you. I can see you on the screen. I don't know if anyone can see me there.
It's, you're hidden.
What?
You're hidden away, Bill.
Okay. All right, good evening. Happy New Year to you all. The, the team working on this, the committee members and Andrew and myself feel very good about it. It's, I represent about 10 cities and towns a year doing renewals. And for Charter, this is a very solid, strong package. And if I could, I could go over some of the highlights. I'll try to be very, very brief. The annual PEG, Public Educational Governmental Access Funding, to continue your three local community TV channels will be at 5% of Charter's gross annual revenues. That's the maximum allowed under the Federal Cable Act. And the Cable Act is very good. It allows the towns to negotiate an increase, which we did, but it really moderates the extent of those increases by capping it at 5%. So you can go up to 5%, and that's what we did. In addition to the annual community TV funding, which is considered a franchise fee, there is a one-time equipment or capital grant for community TV studios and equipment and facilities of $90,000 payable in the first year. And that's above and beyond the annual 5%. So, you know, we've all felt confident that it was a solid package that ensures the continuity of these local facilities that are, in most towns, growing in importance, especially with the pandemic, where you want as much connectivity and technology options for connectivity as possible. Another factor that makes this, I think, a big improvement over the existing license, as well as the license before it. The last two times around, Charter was only willing to go to five-year licenses, which is a real hassle for you guys and for most towns, because then you have to like do this all over again, and it's time-consuming and costly to have these multiple sessions of negotiations that the cable company requires. So we went from a five-year license, the expired license, to a 10-year license. And that's good for, in my opinion, for multiple reasons. And I know, and I know that Eric, who is very close to this situation, I just, I was going over that point with him recently, and, you know, and that's a big positive. I think it's important to mention for the public and for selectmen who, this is a non-exclusive license. You know, we often hear questions at public hearings. Why is there only one cable company? The town must have given them some type of exclusive deal. No, we negotiated a very clear-cut non-exclusivity, which Charter, you know, is always willing to do when requested and inserted by the town. So we have a complete, so should Verizon come along like it used to do and expand into competitive life service? Like, it did that in Grafton and a couple of other Worcester County towns. Did a lot on the eastern side of Massachusetts. So should competition arise and show interest, you have a non-exclusive license, the door is open. Not that anyone is applying for competitive licenses right now, but you know, so the pendulum swings back and forth in that. Some years, there are companies like RCN that come in and apply, or Verizon has 115 towns where they're competing in this. So we have a non-exclusive license, and that's a real positive. The license also has a firm commitment to continue the video origination technology and capability, which makes all your community programming possible. There's a connection from Town Hall, which brings through a fiber the chat, the programming upstream to Charter, where they then send it downstream on the subscriber channels. And Charter assumed responsibility for that interconnection, operation, and maintenance for the full 10 years. There are other origination sites, but those go back to the Town Hall aggregation point through Town Fiber. But once it gets to that point, which we call like the, you know, the local hub or hub site for the PEG access programming, Charter has explicitly assumed the maintenance and operational responsibilities. The license continues three PEG access channels, which is the most Charter does. I should say Spectrum. I've been calling them Charter for 20 years. They're now legally Spectrum, though they are still doing business in some ways as Charter. One of the reasons this took so long is Spectrum has a whole different license and a whole different approach to language and verbiage. And so it was actually new for the Charter people and for everyone, where they were trying to fit the Charter in terms into the Spectrum model. The license incorporates comprehensive customer service standards. The FCC has voluntary customer service protection guidelines that are very detailed and extensive and recommended, and Charter agreed in License Section 5.5 to make those guidelines mandatory customer protection standards. The company continues, oh, one point I left out on the three PEG access channels. Spectrum Charter has not provided PEG access in high definition yet anywhere. Comcast just started doing that. Verizon just started doing that. Spectrum insists that they can't be mandated to do a PEG channel in HD. So we came up with a compromise approach, which it's purely an option to the town. Doesn't mean the town should exercise that option, but if the town is interested in changing out one of the three existing PEG access channels for a high-definition access channel, Charter would provide the town with an estimate and make it available on a transactional basis. So although you don't have it, the HD PEG access channel, and no Charter town has it, you are one of the first towns to have a transactional option where if you want it, you can pay for it out of the increased annual funding or the $90,000 one-time equipment grant. So that has some value. Whether it's worth it or not would require, you know, getting that estimate out of Charter and then doing a cost-benefit analysis at the time. The service to municipal buildings continues. Exhibit A of the license lists those buildings. Charter does count those now towards the 5% franchise fee, because they say it's a requirement imposed on them to provide service to municipal buildings and schools. That does not add up to a big-ticket item. They provide just basic service to municipal buildings. They can provide more, but since we raised them to the maximum 5%, they will be treating that as something they can charge for if they're not already doing it. So I just mentioned that in the spirit of full disclosure. Before Spectrum, Charter used to just provide those as complimentary services. Spectrum says it refuses to do that. Spectrum takes the position it cannot do that legally. The, and because of an FCC order in 2018, which requires that any thing of value required of them has to be counted to the 5% cap, because federal law imposes a 5% cap. So they're keeping that under the 5% cap. And they have a strong argument for that legally, because it wasn't until 2018 that the FCC said specifically that you have to count the so-called complimentary basic service to municipal buildings as an in-kind benefit, which counts towards the 5% cap. You know, they continue the same service area they have, which is the full town, and with a requirement to extend service area to unserved areas, if they, if there are any. Most of the town is built out where there are 20 homes per aerial mile. So that's just continuation of what we have in the existing license. With homes within 100 feet, 150 feet of the cable system would get the service at the standard installation rate, the same as anyone pays.
Hey, Bill.
Yes.
Going back for a second, what you were talking around prior to the cable service of buildings, that's at subsection 9.4, right?
To municipal buildings?
I think so.
Wait.
Section 9.4?
Let me look at 9.4.
Because I...
Yes, cable service to public buildings.
All right, so my question on that is, is that something that you all monitor around the appellate court appeal, et cetera, around the decision? Because clearly, I don't think we're, you know, we're going to be keeping up on that. So if, if something does happen there and we
Yes.
do that, will you reach out to us to make?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. That was ultimately my question.
That's a great question, because it's good to be aware of that.
No one ever says that about me, Bill. Thank you.
Because that FCC rule is being appealed by like 30 cities and counties all over the US, and they were consolidated. They were saying this stuff shouldn't be counted towards the franchise. It's being appealed. And we put in language, and you picked up on, so that is a moving target. We would have to, we have the right to make that totally a free service, not subject to the pass-through if, if, if the cities went on appeal. So I will definitely let you and other towns know how that appealed.
Andrew, there's a message from Eric asking me to unmute his phone.
Yeah, I had moved his phone up, but it looks like that phone number dropped off. I'm trying to get him, get him in some way.
All right, why are you doing that?
David?
So you mentioned non-exclusivity.
Yes.
Does that mean that if Comcast wanted to apply to come into Charlton, they could?
Absolutely. It means that, exactly. However, note, Comcast has never done that.
Yes, but it's, it would be upon them, and if they actually, if they wanted to, they could apply to the town.
Yes, absolutely. Verizon wants to, has shown a willingness to come in and compete against an incumbent. RCN has come in and competed. RCN has come in and competed. It's Comcast hasn't done that yet, probably because they're the incumbent in most towns and they don't want to encourage cable companies competing against one another. But you know.
Cause nobody wants competition.
Right. But the main point is extremely well taken. It's not whether it's Comcast or not. It's what, if anyone were interested in competing, you could absolutely initiate the licensing process. It'd be a little different procedurally than renewal licensing because the state has different procedures for giving a first license to a company. That would be their first license that new for the new company. And the, the state has like more procedural requirements. You have to advertise it to like, uh, different cable companies to give them a chance to compete. And then you have to issue an RFP to the app, to the initial. So it's a little different, but yes, you'd absolutely be able to do that. I think I just have one or two things in my list here.
So, hey Bill?
Yes.
So I would, the thank you for, you're not done yet. So let, let's let Bill finish. Then I'll open it up for questions from the board and Henry, if you have any, and then we will be opening up it for questions for the general public, just, just so you know.
Okay. I have three last items on my outline.
Go for it.
Just, you know, the, some of the things I won't get into in detail, but they're important to note. They're not really cable things. They're more generic. We have very strong insurance requirements. Uh, I think it's either a four million or five million policy coverage and then specific categories of all the other insurance. Very strong indemnification of the town for any acts liabilities arising from their acts or omissions, as well as procedural enforcement frameworks. And the town's reservation of any and all legal remedies of any kind. You know, if there are any enforcement issues, usually there aren't. Usually things are, you know, mediated through informal negotiations, but you want to have that leverage. My last two items are somewhat legalistic. One I already mentioned, the FCC has this, oh, has this new order about counting inclined benefits to the franchise fee. The other I should mention, the FCC rate deregulated Charter a couple of years ago. And cities and towns appeal that, but they were upheld on that. So rates are not at all regulated. Rate regulation has always been meaningless because it's only been on basic service and they can always raise the other rates, but now the whole thing is rate deregulated. And the last item I will mention is no cable company in Massachusetts to sign the license without what's called a level playing field clause, which says if you do give another license to a competitive video service provider, if it's a cable license, and you require, and that competition is only asked to pay 4% of gross while we're telling Spectrum to pay 5%, then they have a right to go to the level playing field. So also following up Dave Singer's point about if you license someone else, Comcast or whomever, you also have to keep an eye on that level playing field clause. Because you have to have that competition come in at substantially equivalent to what Spectrum is doing, or Spectrum could exercise its level playing field clause. In all the towns that have level playing field clauses, no one seems to really exercise them because the towns usually bring the new company in at a similar level. And that was really my last point. Uh, last comment is just to thank Andrew. Golis, the town administrator, you know, from the heart and he had every single twist and turn. You know, Andrew was, uh, would either call me back or email me back the same day or the next day. And this and that wording and verbiage. So thank you for the responsiveness. And the same thing for Eric Borgesen and, and Bill Fontaine, who are my liaisons. Exact same thing, everything. They were, you know, they were there for Andrew and for me to plow through this stuff. So thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Now, any board members have questions, comments?
Yeah, I don't, do I have audio? This is Eric.
Hi Eric.
Is able to hear me? Oh, great. Hi. Yeah, Bill, uh, thank you. And, um, you know, I appreciate the, the board hearing us tonight. I, I just want to add a couple of kind of, it's kind of pieces to, to what a lot of the legal speak that, uh, Bill provided us and, and give you a kind of a, a town perspective or a citizen's perspective. I, I've met most of you. I've got, uh, four kids in town and I, I think at the time I had a kid in every school system. So I've been around quite a bit. You know, a Cub Scout leader, Boy Scouts, um, a lot of work with the Grange. So this was important to us from a couple angles that I, I want to share with you and I will be brief that thi- this is a 10-year contract and this is with a company that is changing and it's changing rapidly. I, you know, I could raise a hand and say, who really has got cable service anymore? Well, everybody really does. But it's not your traditional TV service. It's really about the internet. It's about the Zoom calls. It's doing what we're doing today. And that's what the committee really strove to protect and make sure that as the industry changes, we are protected. And you know, it's, it's been said, Andrew, Bill, you know, they, they took what we wanted from a committee. And really made sure that for the next 10 years, we've got a good, solid foundation. And when I say buzzwords, like we got the maximum allowed. That's a big deal. Not a lot of people do that. Um, we have the maximum allowed from Charter. We have built the fiber network in town with these funds. Bill mentioned it, but we have a single origination point in town for our channels. That, that was very attractive to Charter that we didn't need to have three headends because all of our buildings are connected with fiber. Those types of things that we've done over the years, I think this is the third renewal I've done. Um, and with a 10-year agreement, it's probably my last, but you know, from our perspective, we're, we're happy with it. It took a long time. Um, it was, we really, you know, we, la- last time we renewed this, we really just renewed what we had, but we really dug in and we made some changes to help protect us with that level playing field, the 10-year agreement, the maximum of 5%. Puts us in a great position now and, and down the road for yes, broadcasting on cable, but a lot of the technical communication stuff that, that we do in town. Um, and I'll leave it at that. If there's any other questions, you know, you know, welcome to field them, but, uh, you know, I just want to let you know from a, from a real citizen's perspective, we've made Charlton more valuable, a valuable place to live. The fiber connecting the buildings, the 10-year agreement, um, and, and we're kind of in a good set it, forget it place with this part of, uh, of what a county town can do. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. So we welcome Patsy, select board member with lack. Any questions from the board or Henry? Once, I just want to circle back to make sure before I open it up.
I did have one question that the exclusiveness of the, the new deal, is that new or was that always in place?
We had non-exclusivity in the prior license. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I, I just mentioned it because you would not believe how many towns assume there's some type of exclusivity, exclusivity. But you know, it's, it's, we, it's towns that seek it usually include that, always include that language and can include it. So we did.
All right. Henry, are you, any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. So, uh, a question for Andrew. How is the 90,000 used for the grant in relation to the local access channels?
Yeah. So really the 90 is kind of a continuation from the prior agreement. So they were getting $90,000 per year and that money is annually appropriated to pay to the cable access channel. And, uh, you know, it's the receipts that we receive from this agreement and, and any subsequent agreement that go toward, or directly toward cable access and in the needs of cable access.
Yeah. And specifically that, that, those dollars went to the rebuilding of a head end that we have, we actually have it in today. So it's, it's, it's what's running our channels. It's what records our television shows and rebroadcasting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, well, if anyone is listening from the public and you'd like to ask a question, now would be the time. See anything in the chat? Anyone raising their hand, Andrew?
Nope, seeing none.
Give another few seconds. Okay. Someone's having technical difficulties.
Still seeing up.
All right. All right. So we need to vote.
Yeah. So Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, discussion, hearing none. Patsy? You, you're muted.
So I missed like the 99% of this. So I'm just going to be cute. I'm not going to vote on it.
Okay. Uh, Bill?
Hi.
Steve?
All right.
David? You're muted, David. I saw, I, I can. But I, okay. So the public hearing is now over.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the cable television license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or a motion and second and a discussion. Hearing none. Bill?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Patsy, you're abstaining and I vote aye. So it does pass. Thank you very much for being here, Bill and, and Eric and Andrew, all the work that you put into this. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you. Happy New Year. Good take here. We'll see. Get to stop by Town Hall and sign the two, at least two originals.
Oh, Mary will scream at us. Don't worry.
Oh, yeah. Don't, yeah. Don't worry about that.
Right.
After the meeting, we could be, we'll, yeah, we have this down, Bill.
We have to get those into the hands of the bureaucracy of our friends at Charter. And we should thank John Marr at Charter for despite be holding, playing it close to his chest and not revealing much through a long negotiation. At the end, he showed he was listening and seems to have come through with a lot of the stuff. So we Charter ended up being a good negot- and fair negotiation partner. Thank you all.
All right. Have a good night. All right. So we will now go to, we are, for those of us who are trying to follow along, we are under scheduled appointments. The 7:30 appointment is with the Fire Station Building Committee. Andrew, want to take this into this?
Fire Station Building Committee met on January 13th and then again last night on January 25th with Tecton Architects and are here with information regarding the project and various timelines that are being considered by the committee, committee dependent on the final project scope and timeline of the Board of Selectmen would like to see. So if you can one second to bring some of the committee members on. All right, Rob, Ed, Rebecca, Jeff, I think you guys are, you guys are up.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
So yeah, we can give you a little bit of an update as far as what we've done in the last two meetings and we can talk a little bit about it. Rebecca is on as well as Jeff McElravy is on from Tecton Architects and they can share some insight. So we started with nine out of our 11 committee members present for the first meeting and 10 out of the 11 present for the second meeting. We focused on, well, we started looking at potential other sites, you know, making sure that the site that we have, the 19.5 acres on Masonic Home Road that's already been purchased. Is the sort of the best site for us, you know, and, you know, wondering if there is another site out there. So we did ask Tecton to look at a couple of other sites, um, just really briefly to make sure that the site that we have is good or is the best one. They're still doing a couple more items for us. So that's one scope or one part of the project that we're looking at. And then yesterday's discussion was focused a lot around the timeline and when do we want this project to shovel in the ground? And unfortunately, a lot of our discussion is kind of a moot point until we actually understand sort of the feeling of you guys that, you know, the BOS to say, you know, when do you want the shovel in the ground? So there's a couple of options that we have. There's a couple of different schedules that we have. We can start today and continue the process and potentially have a vote to the town next May, or we could kind of stretch it out a little bit longer. Um, Andrew just put up this schedule up on the screen. I'll have Rebecca come on and she can explain this in much more in depth. And then, or the other option is the bottom option, which is we slow it down a little bit more and instead of the shovel going in the ground, May of next year or June of next year, May being the final vote, we slow it down and the shovel doesn't go into the ground until March of 2023. So those are sort of our two most likely time options, timeline options. And if we, either one of these timelines, if we choose the top timeline, we would need to have some funds between now and May. We would need to have additional funds for May's town, you know, voted on at May's town meeting to get us till October. Then we would need to have additional funds, you know, in October to get us to the following May, May of 2022. Where then we would have a ballot vote and then we would have the final town meeting vote two weeks later. Um, and then the other option is option three. There's obviously, there, there is some work to be done. If we move off of the current site, which is the lower, we call it the lower site that's closest to the police station. That's one option. And then we are looking at the other option, which is we call it the upper site, which is the field just to the left of there. That's kind of closest to St. Joseph's parking lot. We would pull the building close, closer to Masonic Home Road. If we move it to there, it would be a slightly more cost than if we keep it on the current site. But there's a couple of different options. Rebecca has given us or Tecton has given us some real brief layout options of how the fire station only would look on the sites. A couple of different orientations for us and we have another meeting scheduled in two weeks. So yeah, Rebecca can come on and she can kind of break down. We do have some cost analysis, some very high-range cost analysis. So she can, uh, she can kind of explain that a little bit more for us.
It'd be great. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Yep.
Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Wonderful. Um, Rob, I think you did a great job summarizing kind of some of the potential next steps and potential schedule impact. I won't dive into that much further unless you guys have any specific questions related to each of these stages. There is a lot of flexibility here. Um, these were just a few of a few schedules. Um, we did discuss some being more aggressive than others and others being a little bit more of a take a step back and reassess approach. So these were kind of the two that the committee focused in on as, as having the, the, the best potential. Um, and there was some discussions around whether or not it was advantageous or that the town felt that it was beneficial to bring a bid number to the ballot again versus an estimated number based on design development. So that is also something that was considered in either, both of these schedules and both allow for some flexibility in that area. So either way, whether the Board of Selectmen and the committee feel that an estimate would be better to get it approved on an estimate before proceeding through construction documentation and bidding, or if a bid number is better to be presented at the ballot vote, both of these options have that flexibility. It's really just how we would schedule the phases in between to make sure we had those numbers available to the ballot opportunities, either being in May of 2022 and 23, or in November of 2023. So that was one option we did discuss. Um, in addition or an alternate to this option three is scheduling it so that instead of bringing a design development estimate to the May 2022 ballot, we could possibly bring a bid number to the November election ballot in 2022 to begin construction in 2023. So that is an alternate approach to that bottom schedule. Does anyone have any questions on?
So Rebecca, I think if you can continue what I'd like to do, just to make sure we stay on topic. Finish if you, if you don't. Finish, if you, if you don't mind, finish your presentation, and then I want Andrew to chime in, and I'm gonna open it up to the board, just to, just, if we even, again, I think it just helps to keep us on topic.
Absolutely. So a few other things we have been discussing was looking back at the, the program. The program was originally the Public Safety Facility, so it included police, fire, and combined programs. So we did separate that out, providing a fire-only program as originally. So we did sit down with both departments. It has to be almost two years ago now to discuss the needs, and that went through a few iterations to, to make sure that there were no extra wants in there and that it was really down to what the departments really needed. So we went back to the, all of those documents and pulled those forward to remind ourselves of what the square footage goals, objectives would be. We then did look at what a footprint may look like on site, what that site development costs, how that site development cost could be impacted. But again, we kept it very high level without really being directed to continue into a conceptual design phase for a fire station only. So we were really just gathering and dissecting all of the information previously gathered as a part of the Public Safety Project and, and applying it for a fire station only. But that really needs additional work to really dive into that design and ensure that the floor plan is working adequately just for the fire station and that the site design, it will substantially change as a result of this programmatic change. So making sure that that is fully vetted is really the next step, and also determining the location on site, which Rob, Rob mentioned. So that's really what I think the committee is moving towards. As, as it relates to budget and site needs, as a part of our programming document, we include those high-level numbers based on a cost per square foot. So we do look at a overall room summary, which really just lists out each space that's needed. It also includes a room description, which gets into all of the details of each space, any adjacencies that are required, all of the equipment and apparatus that would need to be housed within different, either within the facility or any type of carport or outbuilding facilities. And then we dive into what are the site needs, what ramifications does that have to the developed area needed to successfully execute the project. Those site needs are substantially less than a public safety facility, as you can imagine. However, apparatus bay and the associated aprons do take up a substantial part of that. So understanding how the positioning of a smaller footprint on site could have positive impacts on cost savings, but also allowing good circulation of public access and response times off-site. So that is something we did dive into, looking at the required acreage just for a fire station only and understanding how that could potentially change as the design moves forward. And then included in that, we did look at what does the square footage cost potentially look like? One thing we did notice is that the fire station was originally programmed around twenty-six thousand square feet. When it was combined with the Public Safety Facility as a total combined with the Police Program, there was some efficiency of shared space, which, and the departments worked very diligently to squeeze as much as possible, except a very efficient floor plan layout, which resulted in that square footage coming down to around twenty-four thousand square feet. So we talked about the possible ramifications of reducing that square footage and what cost impacts that could have. Again, it's something that really has to be vetted by fully studying the fire station only design. But we did want to look at high-level numbers, and I'm not sure if the committee would like us to share those. Again, they were based on the original program, and that process really hasn't been vetted, but we can, if the Board of Selectmen feels that they would like that information available.
I'd like a ballpark out.
Sure.
And, and if there's any, any drawings or anything that, on what it may look like, it's probably too early for that. I'm not looking for a photograph or anything.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So to answer the question, it would be, we don't have any drawings. We know that the design of the building is gonna look substantially different than the previous design of the building. We're, we're just sort of working only on site right now and making sure that we have the right site, because then if we change the site to the upper site, then with the topography of the land, we have to potentially, you know, look at that difference. It would be nearly impossible for us to say the dollar amount. I can tell you it's gonna be substantially less than what the other one is. You know, we came in with a bid number of twenty-two million dollars for the Public Safety Building. It's not realistic to expect it to be in half, because it's only fire station and not police station. So it's, it's definitely gonna be, you know, more than eleven million dollars, and it's gonna be less than twenty-two million dollars for obvious reasons. You know, we're gonna work with, you know, Tekton and everybody else to try to understand that that number's gotta be as low as it can be, but the, the number isn't necessarily based off of, let me go with this, the number is, the dollar amount is based off of square footage. So if we want to build this building for ten million dollars hypothetically, then we have to substantially reduce the square footage of this building to the point probably where it doesn't actually fit all of our apparatus that we currently have in, you know, in our station or in our department. So we have to look at the space needs analysis that we conducted. Then we look at the space needs analysis and say, how can we shrink the space needs analysis down to a more comfortable level? But not shrink it so much that when we move into the building and we look at these nice walls, nice floors, nice ceilings, and we go, wow, this is great. But then someone says, hey, where do you want to put this box of paper? And we go, we don't have a place. We're actually completely full already. So we're gonna look to shrink the building down through programming. However, we can't shrink it down to the point of making it so small that it's, you know, it's obsolete the day that we move into the building. So if it's, if it is, if it's possible, I would, I would hold off on any number right now. We don't know what it's looking like for the market. We did get a number of five forty-five a square foot. That's what it was when we bid for the Public Safety Building. So that square foot number is gonna be less, because there's a lot of cost that goes into the communication center and the jail cells and the additional camera and IT stuff. So we know it's gonna be less than five forty-five. We just don't know how much less that it's gonna be.
So, if I may, thank you, Rob. Tonight, just to circle back to the goal of tonight, because this, there's a lot of preliminary information, there's a lot more work to be done, obviously. Correct me if I'm wrong, you want direction from us regarding the two options in front of you right now, in front of us right now?
Yes.
We're not, and we understand that we have to talk more about finances and many, many other things, but that will be done right now, and rightfully so. They want direction regarding option A, option B. But before, before we get into even more dialogue about that, I would like to circle back to Andrew, our town administrator. And I'm gonna put you on the spot, Andrew. I'd like to know your, your, actually, I'd like to know your recommendation. And if you wanted to add anything to the presentation so far.
I, I think a lot of it depends on how aggressive the board feels it should be in, in addressing the need. You know, I think it's clear that the board sees this as a huge need that needs to be addressed. It's a matter of how comfortable the board, you know, is with moving forward on this plan, you know, after the failure of the last vote. You know, I think, you know, based off the numbers of what the, you know, what the amount that we're looking for at the next town meeting, i- it's definitely up for debate as to which, which way to go. But I think that if the, if the town, if the board decides to put more money upfront to get in front of this, to try to get the design development going and get the project started in twenty-twenty-two, it would eventually save those costs in the escalation. So from programmatic perspective, looking at the fact that you have three votes here that are all at the same time, and you'd be asking that the residents basically to support the project all at the same time, I would say the more aggressive schedule probably makes the more sense from an overall, you know, construction development perspective. But again,
Option one.
Right, but that goes back to how does the board feel about the public support and how much time is really needed to make sure that the public doesn't feel like this is being, I guess, right?
So, Madam Chair?
Yep, David?
So, and just for clarification, the two options that I'm looking at, at least what I see here, it looks like two and three. They both start, for all intents and purposes, they both start in twenty-twenty-one. They both start this year. It's just one is the springtime meeting, one's the falltime meeting.
The other, the other part of it is that the second option basically instructs the, the Fire Station Building Committee to stop any work until you, until they get an appropriation to start the conceptual design.
And how does that, how does that impact the cost? Like, how does option A differ from option B? I would imagine option A would save money, especially given the market that we're in, because I know we say, you know, the bids came in lower.
Although we don't, yeah, although we don't know how kind of COVID's gonna impact stuff, because everything's kind of on its head, the general rule of thumb has been three and a half percent per year.
Three and a half percent per year. Thank you.
Andrew, can you make that schedule larger, please? So I'm, I'm sorry.
Or email it. Yeah, I can't, I can't really, yeah.
Oh, much better. Thank you. I'm getting, sorry, Karen.
No, I just didn't know. David, did you have a part two to that question? It sounded like you did.
Question, and, and I guess more of a, an observation thought, I guess, along the lines of what Andrew had alluded to. So we just went to the taxpayers twice for a public safety building. This is not a public safety building, I get it. And I do support the fire. And I do support moving forward in twenty-twenty-one. We have, like, to quote Karen from a previous meeting, we don't keep the can down the road, we want to have a plan. But along the lines of what Andrew had mentioned, optics and perception, I think, are gonna be key in whether this is passed or failed. And personally, I think if we, we rush with, with the, the, the May, I think there is gonna be bad optics. I'll put it that way, and I think it fails. And if it fails on fire only, having just failed twice for PSB, I don't think this town could go back to the taxpayers' nest for a shovel for five years. I think that for the town to have a good chance of this passing, give the taxpayers a break, let them breathe, and let's look at the fall town meeting to, to move ahead. It still starts in twenty-twenty-one, but I think the, the taxpayers need a little break.
According to the schedule.
The impression that we're trying to rush something through, you know, under their, under their radar either.
So, but according to the schedule, it, don't we have something at May twenty, at, at, at the May town meeting in, in both?
Right, so the first, so in the first schedule, you're essential, you know, you would have to fund both the schematic design, or I'm sorry, the schematic design, the design development, and conceptual design all as one vote. If you, because right now we really don't have an appropriation, so you're essentially kind of moving forward under the assumption that, that you know, that work is going to be funded under that appropriation and what's its, it'll be billed after. The schedule, the option three basically just goes in and says, we're only going to do conceptual design at, after this town meeting. Yes, we're going to get rid of, or we're going to rescind the vote on the Public Safety Building, but we still do need a vote, and it's not as dramatic of a funding appropriation as, as scheduled to.
And, Madam Chair?
Yep.
The big difference, so everybody knows, between options, the top one and option three, the bottom one, is option two, next May, we come to the towns, the taxpayers, with an actual bid number. This is what we have for a bid number from the general contractor and what the project's gonna be. The bottom schedule asks us to go to the taxpayers next May with an estimate number. Now, there's two theories. We failed on both theories, so I don't know which one we want to go with. We went to the taxpayers the first time with an estimate number, and it didn't pass. And people said, you know, if that was a actual number, you know, I wasn't gonna vote on just an estimate number, I wanted to vote on a real number. So then the second time around, we went and spent one point something million dollars, and we actually had a bid number in hand. So we didn't have a guess anymore, we had a real number in hand. And there was people that are upset that we spent money to get a bid number in hand and then the project fails. So the difference really, you know, to Mr. Singer's point is the top option gets us an actual bid number, the bottom option gets us an estimate. And after May of next year's vote, if it, everything passes, then we have to go out to bid with the, you know, then we go out to bid. And we hope that, or we actually do the construction documentation, and then we go out to bid, and we hope that the bids come in, in under the dollar amount that is estimated.
So when is the ballot vote on that chart?
The ballot vote is in May twenty-two. But Rebecca had brought up the other option too, that, you know, that it's kind of a, you know, flexible option that, you know, November twenty-two, or twenty-two is a president, or is a midterm election year, so you could have all of your bid and documentation, and then get it, get it on a November ballot that, at that time to, to go back out for general construction.
So targeting the November twenty-twenty-two ballot for the midterms.
Right.
Larger turnout. So I mean, whatever the board decides, the, the caveat is you could, you could, you could get Tommy in the past, just like before, the, the approval to build it, the approval for the price, but have the funding mechanism fail. So it has to be right at every step to Rob's point, including the price and how we pay for it.
So we can work backwards. If you guys think that it would be best to go to the midterm election and say, why don't we plan for the midterm election ballot vote? And then the October beforehand, we, you know, the month before, the October town meeting of next year is when the full ask amount is gonna be. And then May of next year is another dollar amount to ask, and we can kind of take it in pieces. If that's the direction, which is fine with, with us, then we can work backwards from the timeline. But if you think that you want this to go before the taxpayers at a ballot vote, and really, the ballot vote is the, is the hangup. When do we want to have a ballot vote? We tried having a special ballot vote, and we didn't really get a lot of turnout for that one. We got the most on the presidential. So if you want it on the November ballot vote, then I think we work backwards in the timeline and say, all right, what's our best steps to go from now until November of next year? If you want it on next May's ballot, the town election ballot, then we work on what's best for the timeline that way.
So Madam Chair, I think to Rob's point, personally, I'm in favor of the slow and steady and easing off the taxpayers, then taking the cautious approach. And Rob mentioned voter turnout, so I'm, I'm not gonna argue either side, but arguments were made that the larger turnout apparently mattered as far as representation of the town. Taking that into account, well, the midterms will be a significantly larger turnout.
I agree.
So, before, so David, any, who, Bill, did you have something to say? I want to hear from all the select board members, and I do, I also want to hear from Fire Chief Knock too, and I believe he's on, but do you have anything, Bill? You look like you want to say something.
Now, my initial lean, based upon prior discussions, would be to have the debt exclusion vote in November, especially, because when we, we talk midterm, yes, but you know, we also have to remember that that's the gubernatorial election, so who, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen there? So again, I would assume we'll have a higher turnout, and based upon a lot of the discussions we had, the better representation we have of the voters, I think the better off we'll be. So my, my initial lean, even though it's not tied to it, would be November ballot, October town meeting for the debt exclusion piece. And then, you know, to Rob's point, to just basically back into that as best we can. But I, but I, I for one would like to see a formal estimate as we, as we go into that ballot vote.
Patsy, Steve?
No, no, I agree. I, I agree with the larger voter turnout. I think a, having a, having a special ballot probably doesn't serve, serve the project well or serve the town well. I think a larger turnout is much better.
Patsy?
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the fall idea. I mean, I'm, I'm definitely, I think we need to build this station, and we need to build it fast before other things, before something bad happens at the really, with the situation that we currently have. The stations are a mess. You know, accidental, whatever, but I, I, I guess I agree that pushing this to the fall to, it, it's gonna give us more time to kind of fine-tune everything. pushing this to the fall to, i- it, it's going to give us more time to kind of, um, fine tune everything and have an opportunity to answer any questions, and again, um, for the, for the general public.
Thank you. Um, Fi- and Fire Chief Knopf, can we, um, unmute him or?
Good evening, Madam. Can you hear me?
Yep, thank you, thank you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Oh, no, my pleasure. Um, so a couple of things. First off, uh, in regards to the, the feedback from, from the public, uh, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. I've never heard any negative feedback on a fire station only, uh, premise. Obviously, price is gonna dictate that, um, but we, we've already, we've already, uh, um, demonstrated that it's gonna come in less than twenty-two, more than eleven. I, I put it in a ballpark of sixteen to eighteen is where the, the ballpark that I have in my head, that, but I'm not, you know, I'm not the one who's, uh, building this thing. The second thing that I have a concern about is the we need to put a funding mechanism in place for work to continue by, uh, Tecton, because right, right now, they're gracing us with their goodwill, uh, in assisting us with this process. I think we lose some valuable time and some valuable effort if we, uh, don't put a funding mechanism in place to at least talk about schematic design and design development. And, you know, the, the other caveat to this is we've already heard no twice, but that doesn't change the state of the buildings that we're currently in right now. And I made it abundantly clear at the finance committee meeting that, um, although I didn't put anything forward, Station Two is in desperate need of some work, and Station One is gonna be in need of some work too. I've got broken windows in the, uh, the bays, so those are all things that need to be considered in this process, and I, I just think we miss out on an opportunity if we don't have a funding mechanism in place to at least keep this process going. Thank you.
From that, I, I have a question. Andrew, maybe you can answer that. From, from the original funding mechanism we had in place with text, with, for design, design, how much of that is used up? Is there still? We haven't, last I heard, we didn't use all of it. There's still some left in there from last.
Oh, I believe that they used one point one or one point one million of the one point four that had been authorized for the, under the loan authorization.
Correct.
And, and, and this would be a much less, this is using the same plans, just kind of modifying a little bit. So we're not starting over, so the tax, taxpayers need to understand that we're not, we're not gonna borrow another one point four, we're gonna use what we had and manipulate it into a fire station. Oh.
Well, what we would do is, you know, whatever the remaining un- unauthorized and unissued debt is that we, that we still have, so the twenty-seven point one million, we would go into the annual town meeting and essentially have that rescinded. So you still have the one point four, you know, the residual of the one point four million that was authorized to be for the loan, for the, for the, um, you know, the initial, um, or on the, s- uh, sorry, design development from the prior station. Um, you know, we could talk about the available, the availability of some of those funds that might length this along. Um, but ultimately, we're gonna you know, rescind anything that hadn't been unissued, uh, as of that, as of that date, and start as a new, as really a new project.
So the quickest, A- Andrew, just to reiterate, um, option A is the one that would get the money faster than the option B, right?
Right, I mean, that you're talking about, you know, starting right into conceptual design now and going into, um, construction, June of twenty-two, uh, but you'd be probably looking at a low, you know, I, I know we talked about um, estimated costs, so there's really, you know, really estimates. Um, you're probably looking at a loan authorization request at the May annual town meeting of around six hundred thousand. If you want to go directly into schematic design and design development. So that would be like kind of the first chunk taken out of the project, and then the next phase, you know, October, you'd be looking at another six hundred and fifty thousand dollar chunk to go, to go into the construction documentation, bid or prequal, file subbid, general contract bid. And then that May town meeting vote, you're essentially looking at whatever that residual cost is, plus another, um, two million, whatever the bid cost is, plus two million dollars estimate for full construction. So those are kind of, that was, that's the more aggressive timetable. The second one that you're bit, is basically, you're looking at about an eighty thousand dollar ask at this annual town meeting. The fall special town meeting, then you're looking at the six hundred thousand, and then you know, if you, if you were gonna bid, base it off of, or, you know, go to the, the November ballot, another six hundred and fifty thousand at the next annual meeting, and then the full amount appropriation at the October, um, special town meeting with the ballot, loan offers, or with the debt exclusion vote in November.
All right, so, uh, thank you, Andrew. Here's, here's my two cents about all of this. Um, I don't think we should be worried about voter turnout. The need is needed, it hasn't gone away. We should address the need as soon as possible. This is a public safety issue. This is a workplace safety issue. And we also, like, and, and we know the public safety building really didn't fail by that many votes, right? Three hundred and something votes. Um, and, and to, to the point, a few of your already made mo- of many of the people who were opposed to the PSB building were in favor of the fire station, so I, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that, again, kicking this down the road, I know we need to proceed with caution, but there are needs to, to Fire Chief Knopf's some statement, you know, we, we, we're gonna need Band-Aids put on things, and that's gonna be a cost. So I, I guess my recommendation would be to, to go with, for the first option, so we can have the situation remedied. And I think we also need to let the public know a- as we said from day one, when we were promoting the public safety building and why we needed it, that guess why? If, if this fails the ballot, if the, this fire station only fails, we, i- internally, we have, we're gonna have to get the money from somewhere, and it because the need needs to be addressed, and that impacts public services, right? You know, maybe plowing of roads, you pick, but they need to understand the consequences of, again, yes, and, and, and if this doesn't move forward. But I do believe, and I think all of us may, may agree on this, and I rarely use the word all of us, but I'm talking about the board and um, those, uh, on the committee, the fire station, every, everyone, for, for the most part, was, was in agreement, we should do the fire station. So anyway, that's, that's my concern. My concern's always been about, you know, again, we're, public safety, workplace safety. Um, and then the money, again, we're gonna be spending a lot of money to put Band-Aids on things, so just, just my two cents.
So what are we really asking for then at, then at May town meeting? Is it really, is it the eighty thousand versus the hundreds of thousands for the, uh, for the better design?
Yeah, that's, that's essentially the difference of the two, most immediate.
Because here's my question, that if, i- i- if a majority of the board wants to hold the ballot question for the debt exclusion, which I think we all know is inevitable in November, does it does it make sense still to borrow more upfront i- at the, at the May twenty-one town meeting for the fire department? And I, and I really don't have an answer to that. I mean, I, that's a, th- that is an earnest question.
I, I think it does. I, I, I mean, we have, we're, even like Ed said, we're, I mean, we, we're trying to find a funding, a funding mechanism, ball rolling. Well, we be, whenever we shoot, whenever we shoot for the hoop, it's a different, it's a different question, but.
But we'd be borrowing two different amounts, I suppose, is my question. Under option A, it's the larger amount. Option B, it's the smaller amount. One way or another, in May, it sounds like we're asking for money for this. It's just a matter of how much are we going to ask for the design requirements? And my question is ultimately, if we are postponing, again, I'm not saying we are, but if we were to postpone the ballot vote until November of twenty-two, does that change our early, um, schedule?
Madam Chair, just, uh, comment on what Sleckman-Borowski said. I don't think the second option, it's not a postponement. In order for it to be a postponement, we would have had to have already approved the first option, and then decided to move to the second option. I think that neither one is kicking the can down the road. We're looking at two definitive plans that have been presented to us, and it's gonna be a question of which do we choose? One doesn't postpone the other, we're just gonna either go with A or go with B.
Well, it's actually, I, I, I'd say it's actually C though, because, uh, because a few of us were saying November twenty-two now, and that's not what B is. So I just say, you know, this is one of those it's, it's kind of evolving as we, a- as we talk through this. So Karen, maybe, so maybe potentially, again, just to help give Rob and the chief some direction, maybe we start with, when do we want the ballot question? And, and then, and then we back into it? I don't know, it, it just, something to help move, move the discussion along to like, give some direction.
So, yeah, if I could, um, Madam Chair, I think that's the best way is if you guys decide that you want it on November's ballot, I think that'd be sort of step one, instead of you telling us you want it on May's ballot.
Right.
And then step two would be, do you want us to come to the October meeting, or let's not say October, do you want us to come to the meeting before the ballot with an estimate? Or do you want us to come to the meeting with an actual bid number? And those two questions dictate sort of the timeline more than anything else.
All right, thanks, Rob. So Karen, if it makes it easier, although it may, although it like may make it harder, at least for, at least for discussion purposes, I'd like to make a motion that our strategy is, again, fire station only, and that we're going to have it on the November twenty twenty-two ballot for a, for, for, for the debt exclusion.
I'll second that.
Uh, discussion?
So is, are we talking that the there's an option to move that, like, that, could we make it that May before that November? I'm just back in my mind is I get the fall turnout, but that seems like such a long way away to get kind of these things, this thing started. We need a fire station. It's, I mean, we've all seen it, and, and are we sure that we want that fall? Just, are, are we doing it just so we can make our residents more comfortable? I, I just and, and balance that with the, with the possible costs? What if we have, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in costs with the old fire station?
That's it, I'm sorry, good.
So that's what I'm, I'm I'm, that's what I'm balancing. I, I'm, I, I would like to, to get this moving and spend the money upfront. You know, I'm super frugal, and I don't always like to throw money around, but if we plan it correctly and kind of get it moving, it's again, just my thoughts.
Madam Chair, just, you know, we need a fire station, no one's arguing that, and it's not a new need, and I think the chief and Rob will tell you, we needed it last year, and the year before that, and five years ago. So the fact that we're, we're having this conversation, I guess, to, to past his point, we all agreed of the need, and it's, you can't ignore the fact that you have to contribute to taxpayers. It doesn't matter whether a vote is close or a landslide. It's a win or a lose. Doesn't matter if you lose by one or by one thousand, it, it's still lost. So you have to look at this going forward, saying, we have a need, we need to address that need, but we also need to do it in the manner in which we believe it will pass, so that we don't have a third failure. You know, I'm just telling you, it's my opinion, and I'm only one, right? There are five of us. But my belief is if it fails, we're not coming back even for fire. So I'd rather be very conservative. I'd rather have twenty twenty-two and have it pass the debt exclusion and everything prior. We give them a date, and they can back into it, um, and see it go through, than see it be pushed sooner and fail, because I don't think there's a second shot.
Do we honestly believe that just, you know, the difference between May and about, like, that time difference is gonna be the, the, the reason why it's gonna pass or fail?
A lot of arguments made over PSB about size of turnout having a big impact. So to, to, you know, we've heard those arguments, and, and so for the taxpayers to say, well, we were told we're doing this again, and the board's bringing this back again because they want the larger turnout, because it's a true representation. And now the board's gonna go to the voters and say, well, but now we don't need the larger turnout. We'd rather go with the smaller turnout. It, I think it just completely erodes, erases any credibility this board has with our.
Right, but the pulse, but the pulse of the town is, I mean, um, I mean, I guess we haven't talked to anybody in the last few months because of COVID, but the pulse of the town is fire station. Now, I, and, and I'm repeating, because someone else said, nobody in this town doesn't want a fire station. And the, the key is to pin down a number that everybody's comfortable with, so do we just want to push it up just so we, for whatever reason, we believe that it will have a better chance of passing, or if, if, um, talking about turnout, I mean, representation is representation. If you have a, um, a small number, or, or, or a bigger number, it still shows statistically, it's still the, the pulse of the town, just the decision of the town, so, so I just.
And what's the argument to the voters over the second public safety building vote, when the argument was made that we want to bring it back because the smaller turnout was not truly representative? Now we're saying it is truly representative. I think we destroy any credibility the board has.
Well, I think that, that, that we wanted the, that, I mean, personally, I wanted the fire station, and before I was a select, and I thought that was the way to go, and decisions were made differently, so, but and I think that if we went for a fire station back in the day, we would, we, we would be probably digging the holes right now to put it in. So I just, are we just, I, I just think that the sooner the better, and I, I have just, again, the pulse of the town is everybody wants a fire station, and the, the key is to get a number down. You know, either way, I, I think it'll pass either way. Um, if we, if we could be prepared for a sooner meeting, then I, that, I mean, that would be my preference.
And I, thank you, Patsy. I have a quick question, because we've, we've been talking a lot of numbers, a lot of different dates. Can, Andrew, can you just please reiterate for clar- for clarification purposes? When the project would be completed by with option A, option B, and now the third, I think this is the third option that we're talking about now that wasn't presented, right?
So, so the first option is basically, you know, you're probably talking about a year after the beginning of construction, so really you're talking June or July of twenty twenty-three of when that, when that one is
Completed.
gonna be completed.
Okay.
So it's option three, and both options, whether or not you had the debt exclusion vote in May or in November, you're on that same timeframe of beginning in March and end of twenty twenty-three, and ending in March or April of twenty twenty-four.
Andrew, can you put the timeline back up so I can, so I can visually see it, I?
And I missed the second, so option A is around twenty twenty-three. What did you say?
Yeah, so option, so that the, on here where it says, um, option uh, to B, so it's really kind of option A, where start of construction is June of twenty twenty-two, that would essentially be a, and that would be a end of construction of June or July of twenty twenty-three. And then option three, which kind, which is really whether or not you have that vote in either, or the debt exclusion vote, or May, or November, does not change the end of completion date would still be March or April of twenty twenty-four.
So Madam Chair, we have a motion and a second on one timeline. Um, I think we should address that. And if, if it passes, we have our timeline. If it fails, then we have to look at other timelines or other options.
What, what does that, what, can we spell that out? So what does it mean for the borrowing for the next, for the next town meeting? Like, what does it, can, can that kind of be spelled out for me a little bit?
Patsy, that's probably the next vote. Patsy, that's probably the next vote that we take.
Okay.
Because I think what's going to happen is that, you know, as Rob, you know, Rob kind of mentioned it that if, if we determine when, when the potential debt exclusion is going to be, then the next question needs to be answered is going to be, do we want an estimate? Or do we want an actual number? And then I think that by, that will give, and Rob, correct me where I go astray, like that would give Rob and everyone else the option to say, all right, this, this is, this is where and when we need to ask for money based upon that strategic direction.
And with, with the proposal, I just want to make sure everyone is understanding what David did, what's, what's on the table to be voted on now as it's compared to what we were talking about. So with the proposal that is on the table now, construction will be completed in twenty-four?
Twenty-twenty-four, yeah.
Versus twenty-twenty-three? All right, so, but I'll say, I know we've now opened up for discussion. We have the first, second, Patsy made some comments. Are you done, Patsy?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, Steve, did you want to make any comments? Steve?
You know, I'm thinking about this and I'm, I'm not sure if I agree with Patsy that everybody this season, this time around, the second go around the public safety building, at least I had a lot more involvement in this one. Everyone was for fire station only, with a majority. I think it would pass. I think it would pass. I don't know if we, I don't, I don't know if we necessarily need a, a major election to make that pass. I think if we just got the word out there, and we had, and with some hard numbers. And if those hard numbers were around, you know, thirteen, thirteen, a little north of thirteen, between thirteen and fifteen, I think it would pass. I don't know if we need to wait. The twenty-twenty-four completion date scares me, and I bet it scares Ed. That's a long time.
Well, so I just happen to agree with like Selectman Singer that one of the arguments that a lot of people used around the second vote was that the first one was not representative and that we would have a much better turnout and much better just overall feeling of the town with a larger election. To David's point, I think if we, if we go the opposite direction, it's whiplash. And that's all I'm going to say. I mean, that, I, you know what, I'll get off my, I'll get off.
All right, so then I'll chime in and then I will take the vote. So I, I agree with the comments that Steve made and Patsy. Again, I, I, I think as select board members, this is just my opinion, we need to look at the big picture, we need to look at the finances. And I think it's more fiscally responsible, we're responsible to go with a different option to get this done sooner, again, from a public safety point of view and workplace safety point of view. But also going back to finances for a second, we did hear the estimate for the price of this project to go up is like three and a half percent per year. And we are adding time, you know, money on or a year on, so it's money. And then again, we have the issues that need to be addressed and we're going to have to spend money. So to me, we need to look at the big, we, look, an election or a vote or people who have the opportunity to go out there, we can't make them. All we can do is advertise and get the word out and, and move forward. But just to say, well, you know, it should be all about voter turnout. I think that's only one little piece of the pie, you know, one little piece of the puzzle. We need to be looking at the whole piece and being responsible insofar as, you know, with our finances and with safety. And I, I, so anyway, I will end it there because I don't want to beat a dead horse either. So I will now entertain, yeah.
One more comment if I can, if, if, and I do believe in that escalation, that three and a half percent per year at thirteen million dollars, that would be four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year added to the cost that we weigh. That's pretty much in line with what the, what the design costs would be looking for this May.
Madam Secretary, and Madam Chairman?
Yes, yes, Captain Knopf.
I,
Chief Knopf, sorry. You call me secretary, okay?
Truth, truth be told, there are days when I'd rather be back in here. The, now, now I just lost my complete train of thought here. As far as, as far as the voter turnout, and I, and I think you made a great point there is, is that you, you're providing the, the people with the opportunity. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna base all major votes now on voter turnout, what's the point of a May meeting? Moving forward.
True. Ed, that was, that was my exact argument against.
But I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about having a vote for the fire station. I'm, I'm talking about town politics. What's the point of having a May meet when you know you're going to get three hundred and fifty people, if that? So Chief, that's the, that's the exact argument that actually Selectman Borowski and I both were making regarding the PSB and the larger turnout. But the fact is, there were others and arguments made, and, and I agree with you. But the point is now that those arguments were used, if for us to go back on it now because it's convenient. But the original recommendation.
Your credibility.
Mr. Singer, the original recommendation from, from the, in fact, the initial committee was a fire station only committee. Then it became.
I'm not talking about the makeup of the building, I'm talking about the size of the voter turnout.
Right. But throughout the process, it was why, you're right, we went to the bigger voter, bigger voter turnout because the decision was made by the board at that time to continue with the public safety building against the vote of the public. And, and also the, the committee suggested at that time back in August that we should move forward with a fire station only. And that was rejected by the board, if I'm, if I'm correct.
A majority.
You're correct, and the board made a decision and the vote passed because our, our, our recommendation, which actually came from you, was to do it right or don't do it at all.
Right, but the recommendation from you.
At that time was to go with a fire station only. The recommendation from you is do the public safety building, do it right or don't do it at all. And that's why the board went with that route.
David, David, you're putting words in my mouth because I can show you a document that I drafted.
Ed, the meeting's recorded. Go watch the recording, it's on video.
Okay, I'll, I'll produce the, the document that I presented to you that said fire station only.
And we also have you saying, all right, let's look at it.
Karen, can, can we?
So the chair, can we vote? And the vote, and just define it. So the vote is May or November, right? Janet, let's.
Look, can we repeat the motions and we hit the dates?
My motion is to have the almost certain, like unless we, unless the town wins the lottery, the debt exclusion vote, the ballot vote would be in November of twenty-twenty-two. That is my motion.
And David had seconded that. All right, now I'll take the vote, Steve.
Hi.
Patsy?
No, I think we should do it in May now.
Bill?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
No, Gerald's no, but a motion passes for November.
All right, my next motion then, Madam Chair, is going to be, Captain Barton, correct me where I go astray, is that what I'd like for the October twenty-twenty-two town meeting or November, however we want to think about it, the, that we need an actual number, not, not an estimate. So that's going to mean that we, that we spend more money upfront, right, Rob?
Yeah, so I'll have Rebecca come on just to explain if we go for in October twenty-twenty-two actual bid number in place, she'll work it backwards for us so that way we know what the steps are for May of twenty-twenty-two, October of twenty-twenty-one, and May of twenty-twenty-one. Those are sort of the, the four meetings that, or the three meetings that would exist before the October final ask number. So if it's okay, Madam Chair, if Rebecca can explain that for us.
Sure, thank you, Rebecca, thank you.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yep.
Awesome, so that third op, so the third schedule option is showing the bidding occurring in November currently. So it wouldn't take much adjustment to move that bidding to just prior to that October town meeting and/or November ballot. So if you can imagine just that schedule kind of scooching to the left, it would really accommodate that November twenty-two bid number vote. What could be up for discussion is how much wanted, how much the board felt comfortable with voting at May of twenty-twenty-one. We did talk about rescinding the public safety vote and providing some type of project update at each of these town meetings. If the board agrees with that as a committee, in a way to continue to educate as the committee moves forward. But really what would occur is that at May of twenty-twenty-one, you would really just be asking for that conceptual design money. And Andrew said that's a much smaller nut, it's a much smaller ask. But then you could have some visuals, floor plans, more to share at the October twenty-twenty-one meeting to continue to update the public. You then would want to proceed after October of this year with schematic design and design development so that you could meet that May of twenty-twenty-two town meeting to get additional monies approved to actually put the construction documentation and the bid together for that November, October vote. So it, it's, it's basically in alignment with that third schedule. We would just kind of shift some of the, the windows of time to make sure we had those bids prepared before October town meeting of twenty-twenty-two.
So Rebecca, assuming then that the town meeting voters agree with us and feel that a fire station's appropriate, et cetera, and basically every town meeting between now and October of twenty-twenty-two, in a, in theory, voters could have the opportunity to put the brakes on this thing. But at the same time, the, the inverse is also true, is that we're getting approval from the voters, continue on the path, and so that, that everyone is on the same page and come for the final vote, that there are no surprises and everyone had ample opportunity to, to voice their opinion at that point.
I, I would agree with that, with that conclusion. I also think it would be important to note that at each of those town meetings, you could share an estimate at the current phase. So we would get an estimate for conceptual level, we could get an estimate done for design development level, and then present a bid number for the final vote. So you'd be updating the public on where the number's trending as well.
So for the people at home, we're, we're going to be asking you for monies, plural, at a bunch of different town meetings so that you get a good number when you finally go to vote on this. This is, you know, I, I hate to use the like T-word, transparent. You can't get more transparent than this. This is literally putting it out there every single time to make sure everyone knows what's going on. But we're gonna be asking for money to get a good number at the end of the day. That's the, that's the end result. So, yeah, so Karen, that would be my, my official motion would be basically that, you know, based upon Captain Barton and Rebecca's schedule. I mean, you know, we can like hash it out, but really starting in, in like May twenty-one, with the end result being that come October twenty-two, we actually have a real number and not an estimate.
Madam Chairperson, this is Jeff McElravy speaking. Can I interject a comment here?
Sure, would you mind just, are you on the committee or?
I'm Jeff McElravy with Tecton Architects.
Tecton, oh Jeff, sorry. I, I actually can't hear you, too. I can't hear you well.
Jeff, you're just a little muffled, that's all.
Yeah, a little.
All right, I'm gonna get a little closer to my mic. Mr. Wallace, is, is John Lemieux on but muted?
I don't see John on the call.
He sent me a message that said that if we want to have him on, just to give him a call, he was, he was in another meeting. Let me, let me give him a call real quick, Jeff, if you want to just talk.
Yeah, the, the reason I was interested in having Mr. Lemieux join us is just to comment on that schedule of receiving bids prior to October. And then not being able to start, not being able to sign contract until November. And November's not a fabulous time to start construction. I, I would be interested in his role as the town's OPM, complications involved with that.
Weren't we saying, Jeff, though, that we'd be starting construction March, March, not?
But that means that from the time we receive the bids prior to the October town meeting, that we're letting four, four months sit, there may be statutes in the bidding laws that, that impact that decision.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep, Rebecca.
So just to build on Jeff's comment, he brings up a very good point. It was something we were looking at specifically around a, a November vote, vote. And it would actually potentially could proceed similar to how we proposed the public safety building. Because that was a similar type timeline where the bids were coming in prior to that November ballot. Then the bids were, this is the number, the November ballot occurred, and we asked the contractors to hold their bids for sixty days, so two months, basically, middle of October, whenever our deadline was to get that number in through December. In doing so, we were allowing them to quote unquote, begin construction in the winter months, i.e. they could do some of the paperwork, some middles, you know, start to mobilize, but maybe not break ground. It would be up to them whether they wanted to carry the costs of winter conditions for that time. In doing so, we did extend the construction period because we weren't actually giving them, you know, construction can't really begin in theory in December or January. It's not a great time to break ground. So the town would be encumbering slight additional cost for that extended general conditions. But that could be a possible solution if there are legal constraints to how long that number can be held by the general contractors.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Rob?
Andrew, John's going to be logging on. And just so everybody knows, John Lemieux is the, is the town's owner's project manager from Vertex Engineering that's been hired for this project.
Hi, John, is he on yet?
Hey, John?
Yeah, he's on.
John, can you say something so we can hear you?
Can you hear me?
Yep. John, it's you. Hey, John?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you, you're just gonna have to talk extremely loud, that's all, you're very soft. So we're discussing about waiting or bid in hand for October of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, going to the ballot vote in the midterm election, November of twenty-twenty-two. And then the, the, you know, the concern is sort of the construction timeline of starting in the wintertime.
Okay, so I caught the end of what you said. So you can, first of all, having a bid, bid go stale. As long as it's reasonable, the Attorney General will allow bids to go as long as almost ninety days. As long as that information is put out there in the plans and specifications so that all of the bidders know that they have to hold their prices for sixty to ninety days, whatever we decide on. Ninety's about it. Once you get beyond ninety days, you know, that's a long time. I think sixty is a, sixty to seventy-five is probably a, a good number. And again, that's usually workdays, it's not calendar days, it's workdays. So sixty workdays will essentially get you to two and a half months. We had to do that in a couple of situations with bidding recently to be able to get to a town meeting, but also have bids in hand. So it is something that can, can be done. As far as a project, you know, a project contracting in November, December is not the end of the world. The reality is, is that the construction won't start until March. So you can bid it, you can bid it so that it's a real project and people know that it's out there. But what you would do is you would extend the duration for that winter period of January, February, March, because no one really has the expectation that much work will take place. Obviously, a favorable winter, we've had them occasionally. But if you go back to six years ago, six years ago was the anniversary of that six consecutive Saturdays of two and three-foot snowstorms that we had in fifteen. So a winter like that is just terrible. A winter like last year, yeah, you could be building. So best to have the duration of the project that you expect, starting in March. March is a good time to start because that then allows the contractors to have that building closed in and weather tight by the time the snow flies in November, you know, in early snow or something like that. That bridge period of January to March, I would just add it to the contract duration. And, you know, they can use that time for submittals and shop drawings, getting the project ready to go with the understanding that you hit the ground in March and we would expect the project of this size twelve to thirteen to fourteen months later.
Thanks, John.
So Madam Chair, this is Jeff McElroy. That, that addresses the concern that I raised. So I'm satisfied from that perspective.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have something to add.
Henry?
Uh, I just wanted to comment on Mr. Borowski's claim to the public about asking the, presenting funds, like asking the public for funds at every meeting. I'm a little cautious about that because I'm afraid that every public meeting isn't a true representation of what we'll, what we will see in November. So I think that we approached the debt exclusion in November, that we do a better job of educating the public of what it means. Cause I feel like a lot of voters are turned off by that in the last election about the public safety building. I know you brought that up, Ms. Speewack, on November 24th.
What did I bring up, Henry?
No, it's a good point. It, it, a lot of people, I mean, this was a, this was, this all was a tough year. I mean, there were, it was COVID, there was a lot of other reasons people were scared. There was a lot of other wrong.
Yeah.
But just to, just to reiterate, we once again have gone against the recommendation, basically, of the committee. We've once again have gone against the recommendation of our town administrator. We knowingly kicked this can down the road, knowing that it's gonna cost the taxpayers more money. We are endangering the lives of our employees. But hey, we'll have better voter turnout. I'm, I'm sorry if, I'm just really a little frustrated, but I respect all of you and, and your decisions, but it makes me, I just don't understand things sometimes. I just think we need to look at the big picture. Having said that, would we, if there, if there are no other comments, we can, we can take a vote. Want to refresh what the vote is once again?
Yeah, so the motion being that starting in May 21 with the ultimate object, objective of having a October 22 and November, pardon me, yeah, October 22 and then November 22 ballot question and town meeting question for a debt exclusion. That we have an actual number for those, for those debt exclusions. So not an estimate, an, an actual number. Or, or as close as we can get, quite frankly.
All right. Take the roll, it has to be roll call. Patsy?
Hi, we definitely need a number.
Yeah. Steve?
Hi.
David? David, are you muted? He's muted. We can't hear you.
Yeah, David, there's something wrong with your mic. There you go.
And I didn't do it. I don't have the controls. That was an I. All right. Bill, did I get you yet?
I.
All right, and Chair of Votes, I. Okay, so passes.
So then, so what do we need then for, for May? Rob, are you gonna get with like Andrew to like ask for that?
Yeah, so we think we know, we will, we will know the number before you guys need to know the number. So, once we settle on the site of Upper Site, Lower Site, or another location, we should have that probably by the next meeting.
Okay, cool.
And we can work with Tekton about what it's going to be between now and May. Oh, and then, you know, then she'll be able to tell us what the need is come the May vote, you know. There was a number that was thrown out, about $80,000 is probably what's gonna be needed at the May vote to get us through the next design phase to get us to October, to get us to May, to get us to the following October. So we're just gonna take smaller chunks. And, and I, I appreciate the committee and to Mrs. Speewax, you know, point, I, I agree that we need this building. But I also agree with, you know, the other people in the committee. There, there was a resident on the, on the committee call yesterday, as well as some of the other people is, it, it may be, it may behoove us to go into smaller numbers and allow us to get in front of the taxpayers more often and explain to them the project. That's the biggest problem that we have is with the ballot vote is we don't have a means to give a presentation and then let everybody go to the ballot box and make a, make their vote. You know, people go into the ballot box and unless they've come to a town meeting or unless they've heard, read the newspaper, unless they heard a presentation, you know, through Zoom or something, they may not know anything about the, the project. So the fact that two, two weeks, you know, probably the November special, you know, town meeting and then the November, the October special town meeting, the November ballot right afterwards. What's that? Maybe three weeks later, we're asking them to vote versus the alternative is asking them to vote this October and then asking them to vote in May of 2022, where there's been seven months. We haven't been in front of them at all. We don't give a presentation and then they're going into a ballot box. So I agree with you. I would love for this to be on the May 2022 ballot. But I think spoon, spoon feeding it is, it makes a little bit more sense in taking a smaller approach. Obviously, my only caution is, is that if it passes in May, it passes in October and then it fails in May of next year, well then we're kind of, we're kind of stopped at that point. But I, I understand. So I appreciate you guys, your time. If you have any other questions, by all means, reach out. We can send that timeline document over to you. Once Rebecca updates it, I'll send it over to everybody so they can have that timeline. And then I'll work with Andrew about getting the, the two placeholders, one to rescind the public safety vote that occurred in 2019, and then the other one to ask for a dollar amount for the schematic design process. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. I, I'd like to, um, I'd like to make a most motion that we, that we put this November 22, 2022 date back on our next meeting for reconsideration. Just second on that. And my reasoning behind that is I'm just, I got an email and I'm looking at the larger schedule. None of us really saw the schedule until five minutes, until the meeting just started. So we're trying to, we're throwing a lot of dates around there, and I think this is important.
We just got, I'm sorry, we just, we only got the timeline about two o'clock or one o'clock this afternoon. So I apologize that we didn't get it out to you guys sooner.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
You know, and Robbie, I was, Robbie just made a really good point and Karen did as well. Maybe the May, maybe the May, the May 20, the May 2022 date is a better date. There's, there's a long time to inform the they've got months instead of weeks. And, and we could, we could, we could have the construction group be completed eight months earlier. Steve, this one a few times, I'm gonna say nothing you say i- is gonna change my mind. So if you've, if you've changed your mind and, and, and want to revote, do it now.
So it actually, you, if you want to reconsider, it would be more appropriate to do it now because of, you know, people are gonna be wanting to make plans and moving forward so we don't stall us.
I would like, I would make a motion to reconsider that vote. But based on all the information that we, that we're learning as we're.
Is there a second? Patsy, you're, Patsy, you're, you're muted.
Sorry, second. My, my kids and my dog are loud, so.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider the, the date. And just to, let's specify the date there, Steve.
Well, we'd be going, we'd be going for the, rather than the November 2022 ballot, we'd be looking at the May, at the May 2022 for, for the debt exclusion.
Andrew, I just want to make sure we do this correctly. Do we have to rescind or just reconsider with the new motion on the table? I think the latter is okay.
Yeah, it should be just the latter.
Okay. All right, so we have motion and second discussion?
So what exactly is the motion? The, the motion, well, the motion would be to, to make, to make appropriate plans to put it on, to put the debt exclusion on the May 2022. So rather than, rather than the November 2022 ballot vote, and that actually makes sense. And, and what changed my mind on that is it, is it'll, it'll give people from October until May to really understand the project and everything, not just a few weeks. We were rushing to that the last time. So when would you be asking town meeting to vote for the debt exclusion? No, at, at the May 2022 ballot. Well, that the ballot, what about, what, what about town meeting?
If we went with that, what Andrew or Rob, when would we?
So you wouldn't be doing. Yeah, you wouldn't be doing the town meeting vote until the three weeks after the ballot vote. So you could get bids in hand, and, and the thing is, you still wouldn't have bids in hand until right before the ballot vote. And then you have to, you know, essentially get the ballot vote to pass and then go to town meeting and get the town meeting approval. So it's kind of the opposite way of how, how it had been done the last time.
Unless you did the town meeting in October, which I completely disagree with.
But you wouldn't have bid them, you, you wouldn't have.
I agree, yeah. I mean, everything gets blown up at that point. So, I mean, it's a completely different conversation.
So, Madam Chair?
Rob?
The big difference, just so everybody knows, is if you go with the original motion, we're asking for about $80,000 this May. And I don't, I'm not gonna speculate what October, May and October would be, right? If we change it to Mr. Corona's idea, which as much as that's a great idea, you're asking for, I think about $600,000 at May's meeting. So what do the taxpayers, are they going to look at? And they gonna approve an $80,000 line item article for a small portion? And we're gonna keep doing small bites out of the apple? Or are they gonna be palatable to supporting a $600,000 article to take a much larger bite of the apple? We speed up the process by taking the larger bite and we save money in the end. However, there's just a greater chance of it failing because you're taking that larger bite versus the smaller bite. We spend more money in the end because of the escalation, but it's sort of, it's more palatable, I guess. So is, just so we all understand, the difference between the October meeting and the May meeting is seven months. However, we don't get to be in front of the voters before the ballot vote. Other than us doing presentations, which nobody attends. Well, I've done at least 12 of them, 13 of them throughout this whole three-year process. And I can count on two hands the number of people that have attended these presentations. So that's the only mechanism to educate the public between October and May. Versus if we go with May, we give a little presentation at the May town meeting. October, we give another little presentation. The following May, we give another little presentation at that May town meeting. The following October, we give another presentation about where we're at. And then three weeks later, they vote on the November ballot vote. That's my, that's my only concern is I can, we can get in front of them four times and then they vote three weeks later. Versus getting in front of them two times and then they vote on an article that hasn't even, they haven't even voted on yet because that article doesn't come up for three weeks after the ballot vote.
So Rob, Rob, I'm sorry, Rob, is that the formal recommendation of the, of the committee? Cause, because I was just, I, I, I was listening to the last, you know, for the whole discussion. And it seems like you guys wanted to move this up and keep it quicker and, and, and hand, do, you know, kind of do it in May and November. And I feel like we just went in the opposite direction here. So is that the formal, the, that's what, is this formally what the, you guys have voted on or have decided upon to recommend to us? Because I, I want to vote with you guys. So if you, if, if the committees worked very hard, I want to vote with, with, in, with what you want. And now I feel like I was wrong.
Mrs. Redlack, we, we debated this, I'll say probably for about an hour and a half yesterday. It was a very long debate about what's, what's best. And to the point of Mr. Singer and Mr. Borowski, sometimes what's best isn't necessarily what we should do. Because what's best is, and to Mrs. Speewax's point, let's build this fire station today. Let's call the contractors up, let's get the shovel in the ground and let's start building it today. However, that may, even though that may be the best option, that may not be the right option. So the committee, we, we didn't take a vote, to be honest with you. We didn't have an agreement as far as did we want to go with the May ballot decision? Or did we want to go with, we never even thought of the November ballot decision. We were actually thinking of, you know, a much later date. So this November one came up today as an option that we had thought about it, you know, after the fact. So in, in full disclosure, we didn't come up with a recommendation. Actually waiting to hear from you guys, and this is the reason why. Recommended to go for a May 2022 ballot vote. And that forces the town to support a $600,000 article at this May's meeting. And we didn't know what the town was gonna be able to do. We don't know if that's a, a feasible option for the town to support such an article, the, the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, to support such an article. So we didn't feel comfortable sort of not dictating, but saying, hey, our committee says we want you to support a $600,000 article versus an $80,000 article may be a little bit more palatable, that's all.
But let me just, the one, like.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. What's, what was the cost of escalation? So the difference between doing it, doing the earlier one, do we have a number on that? So I'm sorry, what is it?
Steve, Rob's trying to talk. Rob?
About three and a half percent is what the, the going escalation cost is. Obviously, we don't know that for sure. But that's what the professionals are telling us, what the escalation cost is gonna be. Three and a half percent on whatever the project cost is. And to Mr. Corona's point, please try not to use numbers such as 13 million because there are gonna be citizens that are gonna hold that number true. And then when all of a sudden we come forward with a number of 16 million, they're gonna, well, I thought it was 13 million. So we, we don't want to go down the number road. I can promise you, like I said before, between 11 and 22, it's gonna somewhere fall in that area. So it's about a three and a half percent escalation cost.
So a quick thing, Rob, I, and I know, so basically you, you were sharing your opinion and I get that and appreciate that. But I, don't you think, and you, you know, you were really good with your outreach and this time, we went places and we talked to people. And we got the message out there. I think it's still fresh in the minds of the voters. Again, I don't think the need is in question here. And I, I think we have an easier sell now because of what we just came off of and the feedback that we got, like, yeah, a fire station only, I'm all behind, but not this, and that's too high. So I, I guess I look at it a different way, saying, you gotta strike when the iron's hot. I think by letting all that time go by, memory's gonna fade and you're gonna, things are gonna start coming up, new people moving in. I, I don't know. I, I, I think it makes sense. Again, I go back to, and that's why we're in the seats we're in, right? To make these really difficult decisions.
What's your motion?
So just a number, if we, if we say the building is 17 million and, and when I was like kind of looking at what other people are paying, say 17 million, that's, that's $500,000. So if we're saying the number is around there, and I, and I am sorry, Rob, that you said not to throw numbers out. But I'm, and I'm being, I'm, I'm using the higher number on, um, then just by moving this up, it's like we're not, you know, we're, we're, it's like we're throwing that money away just by put, you know, moving the timeline up. So it doesn't.
Yeah, it's, it's Patty, you're correct. And it's pretty much the design cost, that $500,000 is what we'd be adding on to the, with escalation. It's the cost of the design. The, the other point there, and you know, and this is good, and I hope, I know we'd already voted on it, but I think the townspeople would respect us debating this again if, if all of us didn't completely listen to the entire presentation. I, it was, Karen did a really good job saying that, oh, here we are going against the will of the, the committee again. And that, that kind of like struck me. But Robbie said it really, they really, they really didn't have a voted, they didn't really vote on it, but.
Well, because, you know, again, look what we're doing right here. But again, I go back to what, what we have to look at in the big, the big, big picture and not just, again, voter turnout, but we have to look at the number. Again, I'm not gonna be the dead. the big, big picture and not just again, voter turnout, but we have to look at the number. Again, I'm not going to be the dead horse. So unless you want to rescind your, your thing, we're, we're going to take a vote to, Rob, did you have?
One more point, we have, and this is just a suggestion, we have a meeting in two weeks. If you guys say to us that you would support the either option, then let us go to our committee and let, let us, we can take a vote and actually come up with a recommendation if that's what's going to help. But as long as the understanding is November or May, it doesn't really matter to us. We just have to have something on May's ballot. We can't put it, we can't put it off and wait till October. So I, I agree as far as, you know, the timeline and, and the escalation and stuff like that, but like I said, I think it makes more sense for us to do the November ballot auction. If you want to really hold off until we meet in two weeks and then we come back before you guys. And then we can discuss it then. Actually, I don't think we would be, I think our meeting is, is technically after your next meeting. So.
Can you meet? So first of all, could you, could you change the meeting to before? And then the question to my peers would be, if that's the case, then we should, everyone should kind of take back all motions, all votes. If that's the direction.
I'm not rescinding mine.
Ed, do you have an opinion on, do you have an opinion on the timeline?
Chief Knopf?
Yeah, I'm here.
I got it right that time.
Do you have an opinion on the timeline?
The, the timeline for the vote isn't as big as a concern to me as, as long as there's a funding mechanism between now and that point to keep this project moving forward. There's a gap there in that, in that one that we essentially go to a standstill for months. That's not going to help the project move along. And again, you know, the, the three and a half percent moving on. And I thank you for not throwing the numbers around because the thirteen million dollar number is, is a number that's not realistic. I'm being open and honest about that. It's not going to happen.
And I, I mean, just, just look at the, I mean, if our, our voters are, are, are intelligent, and I mean, it's black and white. If we, if we wait that we're, we're at least throwing away a half a million dollars. So, and why would we? So is it, is it strategic to say the voters will be happy to pay a little bit at a time and, and we get to the ultimate goal? Or the voters are intelligent enough to understand? And we could do some work, making sure that this, where it's known that the reason why the date is sooner and why we need to borrow the money is that we, we borrow the money upfront. We, and then we save it on escalation in the backend. It just makes fiscal sense. So that, so there it is. Are our voters intelligent enough to understand that by moving it up? We're saving a decent amount of money. Or do we, or do we do it strategic and say, all right, well, we need to just do it a little at a time because that's the, because the ultimate goal is to get it built. So, and I, and I'm asking it not to be sarcastic, I'm asking it honestly, is that, is that the, is that what we're thinking here?
So I'm going to call for the vote. I'm hoping that's what Bill was going to say, right? All right. So Patsy?
Aye.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, just to make sure, what, what are we voting?
We're going with your motion there, Steve. May, Patsy?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
No.
David?
No.
Chair votes aye, motion passes.
So just to use someone else's words, we just went against the recommendation of, of one of the people on the, on the.
But the committee didn't vote.
Was not a committee, that's why we got.
That's why I say one of the people on, on the committee who's been the spokesperson just said November is probably better. And we voted yes, then we voted no. So I'll get off my high horse now.
I'm going to get on my high horse and.
Hold on, everyone. If I had a gavel, I'd, I'd, I'd have nothing.
You should have a gavel. Why don't you have a gavel?
I have this little marker. So one second, you got Patsy, you got twenty seconds. Go.
Nope, I'm good. I'll get on my high horse and start, you know, do my whole social media blast that we're, we're saving a decent amount of money by moving it up. Do you guys, do you guys want to sit through, you know, five, ten, a hundred presentations? Or do you just want to make everybody want the fire station? It's going to pass.
Well, okay. David, did you have something? You got twenty seconds too.
I appreciate it. I raised my hand. I've been trying to say something forever before we voted. I couldn't get called on.
I'm sorry.
I agree with Patsy that the voters of Charleston are very intelligent. But one argument that we also heard throughout this entire process was timing, pandemic, people out of work, money. And you know, I'm not going to argue the pros or cons of that, but you know, if you, you don't build a house this year, even if it's cheaper to build it this year, if you don't have the money to pay for it, but you're better able to pay for it next year, but it costs more, you're still not going to build it till next year. Captain Barton, correct me if I'm wrong, but he just also said to Bill's point, that is probably the more likely direction to success. And the only thing I'll say is, look, I don't think it behooves anyone on this board to attack other members of the board saying they don't take it seriously, they don't want to fire or they're putting the town at risk. Because the reality is every single person in this meeting is in agreement. And it's not someone's fault because they simply think we should turn left to get to the same end goal. We have different ideas of how to achieve that goal. Everyone wants the same goal. We just have different ideas of how to make it happen.
Agreed. I, again, we, we had good conversation. There is one thing, just, just because I think we need to clarify, David, because of what you just mentioned. And I'm going to look to Andrew. Again, if you keep with the money now, we're not looking with the timeline we're now talking about. The, the taxpayer would not see an impact from this particular project until what year, Andrew?
You're probably going to see, you know, if we go up, you know, based on that May timeline, and let's just say we do a borrowing for the conception, for that schematic and design development. You know, that first bill wouldn't come in until a year after the initial borrow, until the initial borrowing, which probably wouldn't be until, you know, the twenty twenty, or FY, actually twenty twenty-three. But you're not going to see the full impact of that, of that construction cost until final completion, which would really, you know, as I said, if it's not until July of twenty twenty-three, you wouldn't see that until FY twenty-five.
So again, that's important to note that, you know, we, we are seeing sensitive to what people are going through right now. But anyway, we all good?
So what this is saying though is that come May, like in three months or whatever it is, like I'm, like May town meeting. People are going to be advocating for a multiple hundreds of thousands of dollar borrowing or, or spending for plans. And everyone's aware of that. I just want to make sure that the five of us, because a majority spoke, I'm happy to move on. But that means May twenty-one town meeting, hundreds of thousands of dollars is going to be the ask.
Yep. Okay, we're moving on. Hey, we're moving on. No more talking. Moving on. All right. Thank you, everyone who was on tonight. Jeff, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you. All right. Have a good night. The meeting's not over.
Karen, I'm still buying you a gavel. I'm looking on Amazon right now for a gavel.
Mary has it, I just don't have it. But anyway, all right. The question is, where are we now? Because we've been all over the place.
I think Karen needs a cowbell or something.
I have a cowbell. Don't make me get my cowbell. I think we're on, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew. We don't, there was no new business here. So we're going to old business. We did the community feedback tool already. We're on HR, HR assistant. Okay, Andrew, take it away.
So unfortunately, I have not had an opportunity to compile the comparative community data that was requested by Ms. Redlack at the last meeting. But absent of this comparative data, the recommendation to fill the vacancy still hasn't changed. I'm aware that there's a concern in the board was related to the impacts of economic division, conditions on long range budgeting and staffing impacts. Current indications from the state DOR that were brought up at the MMA meeting show that despite the early twenty-two or twenty twenty impacts of COVID, the state revenue collections to on state revenue collections, the current revenue projections are trending more than two percent above the prior year. Additionally, on top of that, they've also announced that unrestricted general government aid will be going up three and a half percent from last year, and they will be fully funding the student, the, the Student Opportunity Act. Additionally, local receipts have continued to show strong growth with the exception of ambulance receipts, which we've seen an impact due to the various impacts of the pandemic. Based on this information, we don't foresee the need for any reduction in current staffing levels and budgeting for the next fiscal year. The absence of a permanent staff member in this position has inhibited our goal of streamlining, strengthening and improving payroll and HR processes, including establishing backup staff for the processing of fire and police payrolls in the absence of their limited administrative staff. While I understand that the board may wish to continue discussion until the additional comparative data is received, I would implore the board to trust management in this and allow the action to take, to be taken to fill this vacancy as requested.
The Chair, I would prefer to get the data and with the, with technology and so I am aware that a lot of time is spent on minutes for our, during our selectmen time. Is there, is there a way that we could possibly share one of our selectmen admins to twenty hours a week to help HR? Or can we be a little more creative versus just bring on somebody new? I, but with that, with that comment, I would really like to see what, see the data because I'd like to make a decision based on what, you know, what other people are doing and what the need, you know, if other towns can do it, we can do it. Just don't like to bring on, you know, just a few years ago, we, we had our, just our TA doing it. So you know, just, I would like to wait if we can. Please.
Other members?
Yeah, generally, I mean, anytime, not anytime, most times that a member wants to defer something, I usually go along. So Patsy, if you want to wave me away.
Steve?
I'm fine with that too.
So while I'm not opposed to waiting, I will point out that we hired Andrew as basically our CEO of the town. And we have department heads that we pay to run the town and make these decisions and tell us what their needs are. So obviously, the majority of the board, I'll support you if you want to hold off for the next meeting, but I think we need to keep in mind that Andrew in the department has run this town, know more about what the needs and shortages are than we do. And we are reliant upon them. And I think when they come to us and tell us they have needs, we really need to take that into consideration.
All right. So Andrew, obviously, the majority of the, of the board wants to get the data. So I don't even think we need to vote because yeah. So can we put this back on the next agenda? Thanks. All right. Thank you, Andrew. All right, now we are moving on to Board of Selectment Committee reports. And the first one is the CMR PC. Bill, Patsy, do you have any, any kind of update at all, meeting, announcements? Anything you want to share?
Nothing.
Do you know, they meet quarterly, right?
Yeah, I haven't attended a meeting for, for quite a while. I, I was on one, three of probably last quarter, I didn't go to the most recent.
All right. And I know, Andrew, you get emails from them too. Did you see anything we should know about per se?
No, not from the CMRP C.
Okay, that's fine.
I do, I was just appointed to their Legislative Affairs Committee. So I'll.
What'd you do, lose a bet?
Yeah, most of.
Too much spare time.
Yeah, I think tomorrow is, we have our, is my first meeting on the committee. So I should be able to give you an update after that.
All right. So the second one is the EDC Economic Development Commission. Steve?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure Andrew will, will have a little bit on this as well. We, we met on the nineteenth for our new, brand new kickoff, reconstituted Economic Development Committee. Andrew did a great job pulling everything together. We didn't, we didn't vote on anything. There, there was a few members on the, on the, in the group that weren't sworn in yet. So it was more of an introduction type thing and, and we laid out a few goals and objectives and you know, we're talking about some zoning initiatives and some, maybe some overlays and some other things. And I was really impressed with the talent that was in that, that was in that meeting. I was really impressed. It was a it's a good group of people that were, that were going to come out of that with a lot, a lot, a lot of ideas and, and moves, I'm sure. I've got on my mind. It was an organizational meeting. Andrew might have more to say, but, but.
I mean, that was, it was, it was a good, good to sit down and get some goals and objectives together on the, for the committee, even if there wasn't anything to formally take action on. But you know, I think it set a good tone of, you know, at least actionable items that, that we can take over the next few months and, you know, hopefully get something out of it.
Thank you both. The Fire Station Building Committee, obviously, we just got the update, so we can pass on over that. The LNG Committee, Patsy?
I know that it was discussed in executive session. I don't know what exactly to say because our last meeting was entirely executive session. So it's, it's, we're working on it, we're working hard. There's a lot of smart people in the room. And our attorney is just fabulous. And Andrew's been doing a lot of work on it. So the Siding Board, it is believed that the Siding Board will soon have its decision.
All right. Well, thank you. That was something there. How often do you meet?
About. When, when, when it's necessary, we don't, it's, it's kind of, it's, it was a lot of hurry, it was, it was a lot of meetings upfront and then a whole bunch of hurry up and wait. Because, you know, the, the, all the witnesses, the, the specialists were testifying and, and, you know, doing their thing. So now it just, everything's kind of at a stopping point. We're just waiting for the Siding Board to come up with a decision.
Thank you.
I just ask as a citizen, what is the LNG Committee?
It's a liquid natural gas facility. It's, it's pretty huge overall, one sixty-nine.
Thank you.
Number five, the Marijuana Advisory Committee, Patsy and Steve, either of you want to give an update when we met last and?
There hasn't been a recent meeting. They're not, they're, I don't actually know how often they're supposed to. I don't know if there's actually a schedule with meetings. You know, every, they kind of come when they come.
As needed.
Might have been August.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Andrew, do you happen to know off the top of your head, is there a requirement or is it just as needed?
I believe it's as needed. I was just looking to see when the last one was. But I don't think there's a prescribed timetable for them. I think it's only, only action as needed.
Steve might be right. It might have been August when we got all the updates.
Right, because there was a, there was a one that was coming online that needed the approval. I'm just looking. Okay, yeah, November was the last one. So I mean, before that, you had January, February. And then we went to COVID, so August, October, November. So it was, I mean, it was more regular, regular meetings back when we could meet in person, but it seems generally in quarters recently.
Thank you. And the Sex Offended Bylaw Committee, David?
So I have the bylaw, I have shared the current iteration with Slapman Barowski. And that will be worked on and, and missing areas will be recreated and filled in with the gold, hopefully presenting that to the board this year and hopefully getting that onto a, a town meeting warrant in twenty twenty-one, hopefully.
Great. Thank you, guys. And the Stipend Advisory Committee, Bill?
Yeah, I think we're actually, Andrew, correct me, we're posted for tomorrow, right? Yeah, we're meeting for our kickoff tomorrow with four, most of the members that we appointed last time should be able to attend. And hopefully I'll have an update, at least kind of directionally in the, in the next couple of meetings.
Great. Thank you, everyone. All right, moving on down to the Board of Selectment Policy Review, we have one vehicle use policy, Andrew?
Mary took care of it.
Oh, yes, I did, didn't I? We did, we did. Thank you. Sorry about that. Board of Selectment Goals and Objectives?
So at the last meeting, I requested the board provide their individual top goals and objectives that they like to focus on for the remainder of fiscal year. Responses received as of January 21st, uh, were as follows. So Mr. Singer, uh, had reduce and or eliminate certain fees, uh, continue to move to a true DPW, uh, see the town become more aggressive on water progress, and put the sex offender bylaw on a 2021 town meeting war. Mr. Redlife had established performance evaluation goals and evaluations and goals for department heads and the town administrator. Improve solicitation of volunteers through creating profiles for volunteer positions and recognizing and spotlighting community volunteers. Improving communications with the board relative to interdepartmental issues and ensuring the need for a fire station is addressed. Mr. Biwak had ensure the need for a fire station is addressed. Establish performance goals and objectives for the department heads and town administrator. Create a tool to improve customer service and establish a policy relative to access to legal counsel. Mr. Borowski had improved financial stability and a balanced budget with adhering to the stabilization fund policy of maintaining a 10% of the operational budget. Ensuring the need for a fire station is addressed and addressing traffic issues, including a larger infrastructure needs review. Um, I also included my kind of update as where some of those goals were. And Steve, if you want to give me some to, whenever you get a chance, I'll, I'll just add it to the list. Um, so.
I covered, but, but go ahead.
No problem. But yeah, I, I just provided a list of, uh, updates, uh, on some of those that I received prior to this. So I don't know if anybody had any additional comments on any of those things.
Yes, Andrew, I read, so I read some of your comments. I can work with you on, uh, uh, fleshing some of them out. In particular, I will tell you the sex offender bylaw. So we actually did look to form a larger committee. There was no interest, uh, from the community at large in becoming involved, which is why it wound up being Slipman Browskin and I and, and nobody else. So, so.
I just wanted to sure if there was being, if there was.
It's a committee of two. Uh, so we are working on that.
Okay.
And I, I think I like your idea, uh, about the committee regarding the, the DPW. Uh, that makes sense. As far as reducing, eliminating certain fees, um, yeah, you and I, we can work on that, I think, as a board as well. I think you know my goal is to make sure that we're not nickel and diming residents over certain things where if we're charging fees and it's negligible and it's not going to bust the budget, why, you know, what can we do to help our residents, especially during trying times? Um, and financially difficult times. And then, uh, the other one, which was, um, RE, uh, water being more aggressive, that is, I really want to see that not stop, obviously. I've been pushing that for a long time. What I mean by that is publicly, right, continuing to move, continuing to educate the public where we are, the board, where we are. We haven't heard about progress or any update, I think, on water for quite some time. So even if it's perceived, the impression is we haven't done much, and I know we have. So I think it's important that we are very aggressive with publicizing what we're doing to the residents to move toward water independence in Charlton.
So. Would it be beneficial for that to, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, just going back to the, the fee, the, the fees? Would it be helpful if I kind of provided a breakdown of, um, revenue received on some of, on those fees?
Yes, because, you know, obviously if there's something where you say, hey, you know, we, we charge this fee and it amounts to $10,000 a year or $5,000 a year, it's like, all right, so if we can help the residents of Charleston right now through trying times, it's not going to bust the town's budget. Why wouldn't we take those steps to help alleviate the load and then burden on our, our taxpayers? You know, there, there are, as you and I discussed, some fees that our board may not have control over, um, that I still think might need or should be eliminated, at least temporarily. So it, I think it would behoove us to at least identify what fees our board controls. And to your point, what is the annual revenue generated by those individual fees? It would also be nice to invite some other boards that might control other fees to see if they might be willing to also entertain reducing or eliminating fees, at least for 2021.
Any other comments or? Andrew, any other? We, we good to go? Anything else on the go, goals? All right. Where are we?
Oh, actually, Karen, one quick thing. I know we had a request from a resident. Andrew, I mean, or Karen, through the board. Do, do you want to publish what our, like, individual priorities are out there? Basically, take what Andrew just said and put it out there on, 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 on the web somewhere.
So let's put this out there. So starting beginning of this calendar year, all the public information that is provided to you guys in your packets are all available on the town's website.
Oh, sweet.
That's great.
Well done.
Very transparent. That's transparent right there.
And we're going to clarify that these were our top, like, we were asked to pick our top three, even though some of us.
Some of us gave four.
Sorry.
Fire station was, well, the fire station was like a must. I mean, um, if there are other goals, just so the public knows, there's, what is, there's like 20 of them in, or, or more. So is that whole list out there? So people don't think that we're kind of passing by other important things. These are just our, you know, kind of our personal top three. That's what we're talking about. We're not, we're not shunning all the other things that need to be done in town. We promise.
Yeah, it wasn't the last packet. The last, the packet before this meeting is also public.
Yeah. And it's, and to Patsy's point, it's, it's our individual top three or four from the, um, all of them that we all created at the, whenever we met that last. And we usually meet every year to discuss. So if the public has some suggestions, they can, they can email us because our email address is out there too. All right. Moving on, I think, I think I'm in the right place. Town Administrator Report, right, Andrew?
Yep. So, um, a few things, bids. So we received, uh, bids on both permit tracking software, uh, system and the radio console replacement. Uh, right now, both of those bids are current, currently under evaluation and we should be bringing recommendations of both of those to a future meeting. As directed at your last, uh, Police Chief applications. So as directed at your last meeting, uh, we notified the Police Department Command Staff that they have the opportunity to apply for the Police Chief position before Friday, January 22nd. Uh, we did receive one letter of interest and will be putting this appointment on the next agenda, um, as requested.
Andrew, the only thing I caution Karen through you is that technically we, it's, this isn't an appointment. It's actually the, the
Okay.
The interview process.
Interview process.
By the way, I would also like to add potential appointment at the, at the end of it. But I don't want anyone to think that this is a done deal. It's like, you know, I mean, my, my assumption, e- even with one applicant, is that, is that we're all going to ask a couple of questions and then make our own individual, you know, vote decision on it. So at least, at least that's my assumption.
So Madam Chair, uh, to Andrew, it, I'm going to play off of Mr. Borowski's thoughts and comment. So we have the interview. There's one candidate assuming the board appoints, then that creates a vacancy. I, I would like the board just to be prepared to discuss that vacancy, should the board make that move? Should the, should the interviews go well? Should the appointment be made? I, I would like us to be prepared to discuss filling of that vacancy that same evening. What steps, to at least to have on the agenda to have the discussion, what steps are we taking? To fill that.
Yep, that's a good point, David. Thank you.
No, that works for me.
All right.
Um, lawn waste dump. So I'd like to thank the Sustainability Committee and the DP, and DPW Director Jerry Foskett for working together to develop plan to conduct a community yard waste dump beginning this spring at the DPW facility. The yard waste dump will be coordinated exclusively by the members of the Sustainability Committee at no cost to residents. Uh, more information will be forthcoming on this, uh, program, uh, as it develops. Um, and then.
Andrew, sorry, just on that, I've gotten a surprisingly, um, like, like, it, like, a really crazy number of questions about this since I got elected. So thank you for doing this. Like, this is going to make so many people happy. And I'm glad to see that, you know, that, that things are in motion. So really.
Yeah, Kathleen Walker was really kind of the spearhead, you know, with other members of Sustainability Committee. It kind of caught, it kind of got put a little bit on the back burner once COVID hit because they were starting to do some of that work when I first got here. But, you know, I think they broke through. They have a good plan and I'll defer to them to give you their full plan right before launching.
I think it's awesome. So very well done.
And then, uh, I guess I'll, I'll let you guys, uh, read on your own the update from the, the conference, uh, that you need to hear me speak about that for a few minutes.
Thank you.
It was so thrilling. Great knees in my basement.
You know how to have fun, you know?
I know.
So moving on to other business unknown at time of posting, do we have any?
Only that I thought we'd, we'd be done by 8:30, so I'm not saying a word.
Yeah, don't, yeah, yeah. Not, no poll hearings either, right? It's like, you know what I would do? Um, I'd like to call for agenda items. I know, I'm just doing it. If, if you know of anything you really want to discuss, um, and I'm not guaranteeing it can get on the next agenda. I have to work with Andrew to see how, how, how long the next one is. But if you have anything you'd like, um, you can talk now or send it along at another time. I know one thing, Andrew, I think you and I had discussed the, um, policy to access legal counsel, that, that's ready, right? We've worked on that enough that it will be ready for the next one or?
Yeah, that's, that's already ready for, for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't sent it along. I wanted to wait till this meeting.
I hear you. And if, if it needs to get bumped, it's fine. But right now it's on there. Um, any, anything off the top of your head?
No, Karen, I think just, you know, as, as Slipman Singer mentioned, having the overall police discussion, depending upon all the different permutations that could occur, I think that'd be healthy to get a solid direction, uh, at the next meeting.
Sounds good. Anyone else? All right, now, I didn't skip over anything, did I? Actually, we put all of it at the agenda, I know. But I think we covered everything tonight.
Good. Thanks.
All right. I want to thank all of you, of course, and everyone who took the time to, um, join in tonight, um, and watch this rather long meeting. Thank you. Um, and with that, there we go.
Karen, you had to say long, but entertaining.
Long, but entertaining, always entertaining. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion now. Okay. Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Steve, you're on mute.
On mute.
It doesn't count unless you're off mute.
Aye.
Patsy on mute.
Aye.
All right, David?
Aye.
All right, I got Bill. I got everyone. Me, aye, we're out, we're, we're adjourned. It's, nine, nine twenty-eight. Good job. Have a good night.
Good job, Karen.